Good call.
Mark it as the city manager's. And that's hearsay.
They switched up our seats a bit. Coming tonight.
It's like we have a few people here.
We do.
Question of the day. Are you dressed appropriately for this?
Yeah, as you're sitting, sure.
I'm sure so.
Oh.
Just came from the golf course. The golf is like two hours.
Uh, you know.
Can I wear warm pants?
If you think it would have a professional impact when you're walking in, you're sitting out. Yeah, that's suggested.
I'll just have the long pants on.
Yeah, yeah. Sure. They're all here. Yeah, sure they are. Pour some water right now, man.
How's the tooth?
What's up?
How's the tooth?
Um, he said that there's only a little bit of decay here, so it's gonna be a quick, um, white compound, but he doesn't have to numb me up for a month. So I got the 7:30.
You don't want, you mean you don't want to be drilling on yourself while you're in this?
Drilling, screaming at people.
Yeah. So do we have a second alternate or no?
Uh, no, but doing nothing is an option.
Well, here's the thing.
We're... God, it goes. Okay. Or what's the lesson?
Postpone.
No, we don't have to postpone. You can.
I mean, I don't, not saying you should.
Right.
But there seems to be like...
Yeah, I don't have my cattle.
Definitely don't advocate that.
Yeah, well, there's no... I only... Okay, here we go. Boys and girls, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome one and all to tonight's zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of Troy. It is 7:30. We're gonna begin in just a second. But before we ask our city administrator to call the roll, we are going to introduce everybody up here for the sake of the public's understanding. And obviously, there are people who are not here tonight who will be watching this at home on one, uh, one of several various means. And also in the future, this is, this meeting will be archived and available for public viewing forever, apparently. So we are going to just make some quick introductions. Over here to the far left, your right, is Ms. Koopa. She is a member of this board, and she's also a member of the planning commission for the city of Troy. So she is our liaison to the planning commission, and she serves as their liaison to our board as well. Uh, we have Mr. Agawis. He's vice chairman of this board. I'm Glenn Clark, the chairman. Over here is Mr. Eisenbacher. To his right is Mr. Calzunas, who is an alternate to this board. So he was called. We did know one of our members was gonna be unable to attend tonight. So he'll be voting here tonight as a full member of this board seated for possible action on one of several items. And of course, over here is Mr. McCauley, and he is a member of our board as well. Over to the side is Mr. Evans, and he is the city administrator with the city of Troy for tonight's purposes. He will serve as our, uh, our aide in our liaison from the city administration. And at the very end is, um, um, Mr. Matzni. Sorry about that. I've had a very long day. I apologize. Mr. Matzni is an assistant city attorney for the city of Troy, and for night, tonight's purposes, he'll serve as our legal advisor for all proceedings. I'm just gonna remind everybody that since we have a, beyond a full house, and we're very happy that members of the public are here to, uh, see what's going on here in our, at our good, uh, normally sleepy zoning board meeting, but also in addition for reviewing and perhaps sharing your thoughts on various items. We do have decorum, and that does require everyone not to speak in the council chambers. We are in the council chambers unless I call upon you. And that decorum allows everybody who wishes to be heard to be what? Heard, right? So we want to make sure we ensure that, and, but we also are a quasi judicial body, and that means that we have some very important work to do here tonight. And you certainly can't walk into a judge's chamber and, you know, have a loud conversation with your neighbor. Same thing goes for this meeting here tonight. So we do appreciate that. If you do wanna consult somebody on a particular matter that we're discussing, or you heard someone say something that you like or dislike, perfect place for it is out in the hallways. But even then, if many people congregate out there discussing various things, the voices carry in, so we may have to order the doors to be closed, and we don't want to do that. We are here to work with the good people of the city of Troy and the good businesses of the city of Troy, and we're hoping everybody is good natured about that. So thank you for everything. So at this time, I'm gonna call on Mr. Evans for the roll call of our members.
Mr. Clark.
I'm here.
Mr. Agawis.
Present.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Here.
Mr. McCauley.
Here.
Mr. Calzunas.
Here.
Ms. Koopa.
Here.
So we do have quorum to move procedi-, uh, procedurally forward on any given item, and I will address this, uh, on every hearing of cases. Uh, so each item under five will be brought to the petitioner's request. Since we're not a full board tonight, we do have one open seat, so we are normally a seven-member board. Uh, any petitioner has the right to request a postponement of their action to, until a time date certain, that there will be a, a full board present, but nothing is ever certain for the future. We know that. So even if you have a postponement till next month, based on the fact that there are six of us and not seven, it still might be six members next month, or perhaps even five members. So that is a, uh, an opportunity to request that. It is not a right. So this board may consider it, and we may reject it. We may accept it, but it's completely up to that one petitioner on that particular action item. So at this point in time, I'm going to call on Vice Chairman Agawis to read our rules and procedures. So this is for the folks watching at home or are here in the chambers to better understand our proceedings. Vice Chairman.
Uh, the zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by city council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. Procedure: The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on their request should raise their hand, and when recognized by a chairman, come to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate the relationship to the property in question, such as next door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertaining to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Agawis. So I'm gonna make this very turnkey and hopefully very easy for people to better understand our proceedings as per what the vice chairman just read. So we're gonna do it very methodically, and for those who wanna participate, you will be heard. Uh, we may not be able to hear everybody here tonight if everybody wants to speak, but that will be, we'll deal with that a little bit later. So at this point in time, we move on to item number three, and it's regarding the approval of the minutes related to the May 15, 2018 meeting of this board. Is there any, um, resolution a member would like to, uh, make, or are there any questions of city administration representatives? Mr. Eisenbacher.
I'd like to move the minutes for approval as presented.
Move for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. McCauley seconds that motion. Is there any discussion by a member of the board? Hearing none. Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Agawis.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. McCauley.
Yes.
Mr. Calzunas.
Yes.
Ms. Koopa.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes, motion carries. So now we move on to the approval of the agenda as presented by the city administration to the members of the board and to the public. At this point in time, is there a member of the board who would like to comment on the, the presented agenda? Seeing that there isn't any comments, what was presented to the public electronically and in paper here tonight will be our set agenda for tonight's proceedings. So we move right on to item number 5A. This is related to a variance request related to 1228 Rothwell. Mr. Evans, we're prepared for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located at 1228 Rothwell. The property on this overhead map is outlined in yellow in the middle. The property is south of Waddles and west of Crooks Road. The subject property and all the property you see in this drawing is used for single-family residential, with the exception of this, what appears to be a substation and a park. There's a more close-up map of the property. The subject matter involves an addition that's supposed to jut out the north side of the property. I've circled it in red, and it's a three-season room that's gonna look very similar to that or possibly identical. Now, this is the site plan that the applicant's provided. This is the proposed addition in dark here. Now, the zoning ordinance requires that any additions to this home, such as this one, be set back at least 45 feet from the back property line, and that's the property line at the top of this drawing. The proposed addition is going to be 41 feet back from the property line, so in order to proceed, they're requesting your leave from this board. So I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there a member of the board who would like to ask a question or make a statement regarding what the presentation was all about? Okay, so we are gonna proceed with the petitioner. So if the petitioner is here, please proceed to the podium and identify yourself, and if we can make sure that these people coming through can come through. Thank you. Please come forward. So, and if you have other representatives with you, then you're fine. Please all come right up to the podium, because we can then do rapid fire.
Okay, sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you please identify yourself and your relationship to the property in question?
I'm Sapna Murthy, one of the property owners.
I'm Garav Kapur, one of the property owners.
And these are some of your vendors?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So can you tell us why this board should consider your request?
Um, well, this, what we are trying to do is purely get, add a sunroom to our, to our residence for recreational purposes. Currently, we do have a deck in the backside of the house, in the north side, which the maximum extent of the deck is eight feet, and as you can tell from the way the diagram is, I, basically, even if I was to change this per the zoning ordinance, the maximum dimension of the sunroom would be eight feet, which really does not give a room. So that's, we are requesting a variance just to add a beautiful room which our family can enjoy. And it does, um, it does not actually impact any of our neighbors in any which way, so we are hoping that we would be allotted this variance.
Thank you. Is there a member of the board who would like to, uh, put a question to the petitioner? Mr. Evans, I, I'd just like to ask you, since it seems like their presentation may be over, could you, um, show us the property on the other side of the street closest to where the affected requested change is? So would that be north of 1228?
Yes.
Okay. And can you blow it up a little, I mean, narrow it down so we can see?
I can blow this up here.
Oh, wow, yeah, okay. And then can you take it back to the original that you had? To make that larger? Okay. Is there any other member for this petitioner? Vice Chairman Agawis.
Maybe, two questions real quick. What is, what are those, the wooded area, the trees right behind your property? What is that?
The wooded area?
Yeah.
That is the part of the property which is behind us. That's a part of their residence. They have a larger lot. The lady who lives there, they have almost two lots altogether, and so they don't use one part of the lot. That's why it looks a lot like woods.
Okay. And you said in, in your request right up there, one of the things you're concerned about is the heat coming from that side of the house?
Yes, we are actually, we've lived in this house now 10 years, and we are unable, we've had the deck ever since we moved in, and we hardly are able to use the deck thanks to our seasons, so.
So can you answer just a real simple question, and that is this? So for us to grant a variance, we're, the petitioner is really supposed to make it very self-evident and clear to this board that there's a hardship that runs with the land.
Yes.
So I saw a picture, and it looks like you wanna do something beautiful onto your house, and when you have, I'm just guessing, because I'm not in the home improvement business, but whenever you have two representatives or two vendors, that means it's gonna be a significant investment to the house, and that's good for the local economy, and that's good for a lot of other things too, you know? Keeping people employed and all that good jazz, as I like to call it. But we're charged with understanding the hardship, if there is one, that runs with the land, so please explain.
So I believe in terms of the hardship, as I stated in the statement of difficulty before, that our, we are uniquely positioned facing south, and the way the, like I said, the back of the house is, we are absolutely unable to, we've had this deck and a patio built for nine years, and I could count the number of times that we are able to actually go outside and use it. And there is, um, other lots in the subdivision that either face on a different side or are just cut in a different way, as you can see how there, there's all different size of lots over there, and, which allows them the addition of something to the back of the property which could be utilized. And I could not tell you any other significant hardships in terms of, other than the heat when it is sun and, you know, when it's rain and elements, we basically cannot use that backside of the house.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for this petitioner? Mr. McCauley.
As I'm looking at it, do you have an awning on that by any chance?
Do I have an awning?
Aning that goes over it?
No.
Um, do you have a pergola, anything that goes over top of it?
Nope.
Have you thought about doing something like that?
Yes, I have, actually, and it's very difficult to go ahead and do that, again, just because of the way the house is facing and, and the way the house is built. The, the bay part of the house projects to the back, and the awning is expected to be, um, the way it would attach, because the deck is actually very small. See, because of these, the building limitations, the deck is, my deck is only eight feet in maximum length from the house, and it's about, probably about the same on the, on the, in the other dimension. So to cover, but my patio, there is a concrete patio, to get any kind of coverage anywhere below, it, it ends up being a weirdly, weirdly shaped awning, which is hard to support. So yes, I did think of an awning before.
And it would have been cheaper.
Yeah, I'm thinking an awning and even blinds. I've seen people that have had blinds.
Right, right.
They've had, like, put a pergola over the top of it that diffused the sun and, and then be able to put blinds to be able to do that, so, um...
Yeah, but then...
But it would be a very small, closed space, which is not really worth all that effort, frankly, because what I was hoping to do is get just, you know, have, uh, we're not talking about a lot of space, but just a reasonable space.
And you'll not be able to use it in the winter.
Yeah, exactly. We still can.
Which with Michigan weather can be a long one.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Anyone else for this petitioner?
Would they build a deck? Was a permit issue for it?
Yes.
Was?
Yes.
Was a permit?
Yeah, oh, it was a permit, yes.
Anyone else? Ms. Koopa.
I saw from the neighboring property owners, do you have anything from the property owner on Waddles? Do I have anything written from them? I don't, but I did have a conversation after the letter was sent out by the zoning board. She actually came over to take a look at the property and what we were talking about, and so she decided at that point that she was not gonna come to the meeting, because she wasn't concerned. That's what she essentially told me. Mr. Evans, you did not hear anything from the property owner on Waddles?
That is correct.
I do have the statements from my immediate neighbors. I actually did not even realize who was living in the back for that many years, because, just because of the way the land is set, but since she got the letter, she did come in and see, she actually saw the property and saw what we were planning or proposing.
And you submitted that communication in writing to city administration? Is that part of our packet? We'll figure that out in a second if you don't know, but...
Yeah. Regarding the immediate neighbors, yes, but not about the Waddles neighbor, because that happened after the letter was sent out by the zoning board of appeals.
So we don't consider that a verbal comment?
I understand that.
We understand that. We understand that, but...
Yeah, but at the same time, she understood that she could come and...
She knew, she got the letter. That's, that's what prompted her to come in all these years also.
Okay, if there aren't any other members of our board, what we do now is we ask that you go, you know, take your seat, which might be difficult in this room, but at least go back into the gallery, and then we have some other business. We may, you may be subject to recall from one of our members for further questions. Thank you very much. So I'm gonna, uh, for tonight's purpose, I'm gonna ask that the vice chairman give us any written communications that we received in our packet or here on the council table tonight before we do public hearing.
The two neighbors that flank her, their property on either side, 1236 and 1220, both were okay with the variance.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Agawis. So at this point in time, we're gonna open the public hearing. To any member of the public who would like to address the board on this one item only, if you have another item you wanna speak at, we'll call for that later, and then if you have one to talk about anything else, like your favorite recipe, that's towards the end. So anyone regarding 5A? Is that right? 5A, right?
Yes.
Anyone who would like to address the board related to item 5A? Any member of the public who would like, please step forward.
Dear Mr. Chair, I'm Moin Mirza. I'm a resident of 2173 Mayflower, Troy, Michigan. I'm just supporting her adding the sunroom. I just added a sunroom three years ago, so we enjoy the sunroom quite a bit, so I would appreciate if you approved the sunroom.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to address the board on this important matter? Any other member of the public who would like to address this board on this matter? Final call for anyone who would like to address the board on this matter. I'll close out the public hearing on item number 5A. The future, if you're here for another item, we're gonna have three calls for public comment. At the end of the third call, if there's not someone who says they'd like to address the board, the public comment will be closed and not subject to be reopened. So just bear in mind, in case you have somebody who's in the bathroom or whatever, you need to go grab that person and bring them into the council chamber here. So we're gonna bring it back to the board table for further discussion and/or possible action, or no possible action, depending on the members of the board. Is there a member of the board who'd like to be recognized? Vice Chairman Agawis.
I have maybe one comment. I enjoyed reading the statement of difficulty right up, and as I was reading, I had this sense of deja vu, like I had read a request for a sunroom before. As it turns out, we had approved something very similar last August 2017 for a sunroom that employed the same two arguments, that, one, it was too hot, but more importantly than that even, that the lot size was smaller than the minimum requirement for R1B properties. And I think, if anything, that point didn't come across as strongly, that their lot size is smaller, therefore they have less, you know, wiggle room in the back to have the extra four feet.
Thank you. And I think that's, that's important information, because as we're gonna be, you know, just moving forward as a board, considering other cases tonight and in the future, you know, hearing comments like we heard, I think, in my old subdivision where there was someone who wanted a extension off of the front of their house because they didn't like the snow and the ice that came down, we can't consider that. We have to consider irregularities with the property in question, and I think that the, the petitioner's comments under item A that he and she submitted to us addresses that it's the lot size for that particular zoning district, their lot is smaller than that, which, to your point, I think is correct. I mean, you do have less options when you have less space overall, based on the configuration of a lot that you had nothing to do in the creation of, namely that somebody bought it later on and they're trying to do something with it. Is there, Mr. McCauley?
Mr. Chair, what, what would be the, be new? What is the lot size, typical lot size for that zoning?
Mr. Evans, can you please address that?
Well, I can tell you is the minimum required lot size for the R1B zoning according to the zoning ordinance. So for R1B for properties with sewer, which is most of them in Troy, the minimum lot area is 15,000 square feet for R1B property. I don't have a number for an average.
Are you satisfied with that, Mr. McCauley?
Sure, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Eisenbacher?
I would like to move the resolution for, for approval based on our five criteria. A, the exceptional characteristic being the small size of the lot and the, the placement of the house where it matches the other houses in the neighborhood, it's slightly further setback. B, the characteristic which makes this compliance difficult is related to the premises in front of us. C, the characteristic is not of a personal nature. D, the characteristic that makes compliance with the dimensional requirement difficult must not have been created by the current or previous owner. It was not. And E, the proposed variance will not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area which the property is located, will not impair, impair the adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, or unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets, or increase the danger of fire or essential, or endanger the public safety, or unreasonably diminish or impair essential property value within the surrounding area, or in any other respect, or in any other respect impair the public's health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare that you have it into the city. We already heard from the two adjacent neighbors saying that they approve it, and it's a 10% variance, it's four feet out of 45, and the neighbors from the back are very far away. So based on that, I would make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second? Ms. Koopa seconds the motion. Is there discussion by members of the board on this act of motion? Mr. Calzunas?
No, I don't wanna change anything. I think the build, whatever they're gonna build is something nice, and it will change nothing, really. It's gonna beautify the area. So if they're gonna build above the deck, you know, geographically, nothing changed. So I'm okay with that.
Any other member of the board? Uh, hearing none. Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared for a vote.
Ms. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
No.
Mr. Calzunas?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Agawis?
Yes.
We have the requisite four minimum votes for the motion, so therefore the motion is approved. Congratulations, you have your variance. Have a very good night. Thank you. There's no applause, please, in the council chamber, even though they were a very nice couple, I'm sure. We move on to item 5B, and 5B is related to 3367 Ellenboro. Mr. Evans, are you prepared to present to us?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is a property at 3367. This involves a request to split a parcel of land into two. The subject property is located on the west side of Ellenboro, that's south of Vanderpool, and that is north of Big Beaver. west side of Ellenboro. That's south of Vanderpool, and that is north of Big Beaver, between Livernoy and Rochester Road. This is a close-up of the subject property outlined in yellow. Now, this is the proposed split diagram that the applicants provided us. Ellenboro in this diagram is actually on the bottom, and the outline here with the split down the middle shows the size of the properties. Now, in this zoning district, any newly created parcels need to be at least 7,500 square feet in area. As proposed, the two resulting parcels would be 7,7320 square feet in area. So in order to receive approval for this split from the city assessor, the applicant is requesting relief from the minimum lot area. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there a member of the board for the city administration? Vice Chairman Agalas?
Quick question. Did the developer finalize the purchase or is it contingent on zoning approvals?
I don't know that. Perhaps the developer does.
Any other member of the board? Mr. McCauley?
Are they still required to have the minimum setback from the rear property line of 45 feet?
For this zoning district, this is a R1E. They would be required to have whatever the minimum is for that area, and I could let you know what that is. So in the R1E at the bottom of this chart, they need a 35-foot rear yard setback.
Any other member of the board? Okay, we'll call the petitioner forward, please. And any representatives that the petitioner has, please identify yourself in question to, or in relationship to property in question.
My name is Gary Abuthar. I'm here on behalf of Murray Deagle tonight from Deagle Development, Paragon. I know how to pack them in here, Tony, don't I?
Oh, of course.
I couldn't hear very well out there, but as Paul explained everything up there, I don't know if he showed you the next page, Paul, that has the lot behind it.
Yeah, that was in their agenda.
That's in their agenda.
They have received that, yes.
The point is that we bought 3367 Ellenboro. First went to neighbors on both sides, tried to buy three feet to make it a legal split. Couldn't do it. Went to the people directly behind me. They wouldn't sell any property. Went to the person at 3382 Kilmer, and they sold us 10 feet of property. So I came into the assessing department, and we can have a split, which would not require a variance, but the lot would be very odd-shaped. It would have a two feet in the back of the one lot, over five, across 10, in which then the next-door neighbor would have two backyards in his backyard besides the backyard that's already existing there. It's a very goofy split to get the 300 square feet that we needed, but we have it. So we can build two houses there. It's not an argument of there's going to be two houses or one houses there. It's a matter of how the lot lines are going to look. I went and talked to assessing. They would much rather see straight lines in lots. Straight lines make better neighbors. But in order to get to 300 square feet, we had to buy that part of 3382. So the real estate of the one backyard will go all the way to the north of 3382, which is 40, 45 feet behind the existing house. And you'd have a two-foot walkway to get to it. And that's pretty much why I'm here today. If there's any questions, I'm sure you might have some I can answer for you.
Ms. Eisenbacher?
Did you receive, did you get any letters or petitions from the neighbors?
I talked to the neighbors. I talked to the one directly to the north. He's fine with it. Talked to the people across the street. They're all fine with it. I just live a block and a half away from there, so I go by it. They're happy to see the house go down. They're happy to see there's a 10, probably 10 cotton trees that are there that are monstrous. They're happy to see those go down. I do not know if you got any letters. I did not ask Paul today if he had any letters, one way or the other, for support or not support, but I haven't heard. I tried to talk to as many people as I could.
Okay, thank you.
So you've been before this board many times in the past, and so this is the first time I've heard this logical argument from a petitioner.
Different than what I've ever come in for.
It is different.
Yes.
And the argument's different. And I use the word logical, and I don't know that I should have used that word, because what you're arguing is that to avoid a lot creation that would have hardships because of the oddly shaped size of it, we should grant a variance to avoid a hardship, where, as you know, we're charged with looking at granting, potentially granting variances for something that actually indeed has a hardship. And so that's reverse logic, and I studied logic in college, and so I don't know that I can connect those dots.
I'm, you know, I'm looking at it as, I'm the builder. I'm going to be gone in one year, and the people are going to buy the houses. They want to be in Troy. They're going to buy the house three years, five years, 10 years down the line. Your, Paul's department's going to get calls because the one person may not go behind his house to cut the weeds, and they're not going to know how to get back there. And I understand your logic, but it just cleans up lot lines, and you can see your backyard, and you can see what's there. I mean, I didn't want to come here and ask you for a variance without having the property in the back to do it, because then I'm just looking like I'm a developer that's looking to make more money. I'm not doing that. I'm looking just to make things easier for the people that buy the property in the future.
Thank you. Any other member of the board for this petitioner? Okay, if you could attempt to have a seat. Thank you. So I'm going to call on Vice Chairman Agalas to please present to us any communications we've received on this matter.
I see one email we just got. It is against the variance. The problem is, I don't know the address of that person. At least I'm missing it on the sheet, but there's one vote for no.
All right. Thank you. So this time, we're going to call the public hearing open for this matter, 5B. If you're here to speak to the board on this matter, please come forward and identify yourself and your relationship to the property in question. Good evening.
I'm Jolene Radabush. I live at 3370 Kilmer. We butt up against that property. We have the lowest line property on that block. The property behind us is at least three, four feet higher in elevation. We already have a problem with drainage from the surrounding lots. We have standing water during the spring. This was over 15 years ago. We had the city out to ask them about how to handle drainage, and we were told 15 years ago that there was really nothing we could do because we were so lower than everyone else. And if we tried to put drainage in, we'd actually draw water to our property instead of drain it. So I'm concerned about the resale value of our lot. Yes, my husband says somebody came and wanted to buy the back 10 feet of our lot, and he turned them down. But that is my concern and why I don't want to see two large homes covering that property. And where's the water going to go? Onto us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public for the board on this matter? Please step forward. Let's see if somebody else wants to speak. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to address the board on this matter? Any other member of the public who'd like to address the board on this matter? Good evening.
Hi. My name is Sue Webster. I live right next to this house. This builder has tried this several times. He's offered us money to take 10 feet of our property. We live right on the corner there. That lot is not big enough for two homes. We have drainage problems because of that house. There's so much brush back there that it's never been cleaned up. There's all these cottonwood trees that are a mess, and we're afraid if they cut those down, they're going to fall on top of our house, because it comes over in our yard. It's a mess. That house is a mess. If they would just build one house, it would be fine, but two, it's going to be a mess.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We love your T-shirt. So any other member of the public who'd like to address the board on this matter? Please proceed to the podium. In a perfect world, we would not have the door blocked to ensure that any member of the public could come forward. I think it's open. Thank you for assisting with fire marshal code, I'm sure. So any other member of the board who'd like to address, any other member of the public who'd like to address the board on this matter? I'm seeing that there isn't anyone coming, so at this point in time, I'm going to close the public hearing. I think the petitioner would like to say something else. Is there a member of the board who'd like to ask the petitioner to recall? Mr. Evans?
Yes, and just in clarification to the comment received in your packet, it does show that they indicated they live south of the proposed location, but they didn't say where. But there is someone with the same name that lives on the property south of 3341 Ellenboro. So I wanted to clarify that.
And that's in opposition?
Right.
Yes.
That was in your packet. Yep.
Okay. To my colleagues on the board, is there any interest in having the petitioner come forward to say anything else? Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes, I'm interested in hearing from the petitioner again because this is an especially difficult one because he technically doesn't need a variance. So, yes, please.
Please come forward.
Thank you. Just to answer those questions is, anytime you build a house in the City of Troy, engineering makes you keep your water on your property. So when the houses are built there, no water will be on any of the neighbors' property. There'll be rear yard drains. Our water has to go to a drain and go to a drain. So our water cannot run onto neighbors' properties, and that's a City of Troy engineering requirement. And the second is when the trees come down, there'll be a professional tree remover coming to cut the trees down if they're hanging over neighbors' houses. And if one falls, they are insured to fix whatever they drop. But it'll be a professional tree person taking them down. And then, one last part. Could you show the lot split that'll be there, just in case? Does anybody want to see it?
We saw it earlier. It's in our packet.
Yeah, it's in our packet.
Okay, I didn't know if...
I think Mr. Eisenbacher has something for you.
Yeah. So you'd have insurance and a professional tree trimming service for taking down the trees to make sure. And you'd hopefully give them notification when it's happening.
Absolutely.
So they can see. And so with the drainage, does that mean you're planning to have side yard?
There will be a drain from the front of the yard all the way to the backyard, and that catch basin will catch all the water, at whatever elevation has to be. But my water will all go into a catch basin. That'll be built to the Troy standards. Now, if the neighbors' waters run to it...
Yeah, it concerns me because I've had lots of people complain about water.
Well, I'm not draining their water. The water that runs off of that lot will have to be drained into it. And, I mean, Paul can tell you, you have engineers down there that aren't going to let anything go because they do not want the neighbors calling and complaining that water's in their yard. So...
Have you done any preliminary engineering to look at what drainage exists currently?
I looked to make sure there's sanitary sewers there, and I looked at there's drains. There's drains in the front. You run an eight-inch line to the backyard, put a catch basin there at the lowest elevation, and all the water disappears. Your sump pumps lead into them. Your gutter downspouts run into them, and there's no water into them.
Okay, and it is a separate system? It's sewer separate? Okay, it's not a combined system in that neighborhood?
No, not a combined system.
Okay.
I got a question.
Mr. McCauley?
How many other houses in that area are two-story?
That's a good question. To the south, there's one, two, three. To the east, there's 12. To the northeast, there's another three.
I mean, just adjacent to that property right now?
Ranch and ranch.
Across the street, are those newer homes?
No. Those are ranches, straight across the street and either side are ranches.
And with that, those lots would be only 60 feet wide, correct?
Correct. And, you know, in our zoning, 60 foot is the minimum lot width, 25-foot front, 35 in the rear. The only thing we're missing is the actual square footage of having 75 instead of 72. So as you're driving down the road, you would never notice there was a variance on that property based on square footage.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So we will bring it back to the board's discretion to act upon it in one way or another, or not to act on it. It's your decision. Ms. Cooper?
So, Mr. Evans, let's say we grant the split and they build the house, and then you, the owner of that house then comes forward saying they want to build a sunroom. They would need a variance, and we would say yes, because your hardship was not created by you. Is that a possible scenario?
One may think it is, yes.
So...
I think it's speculative.
It's just something to think about, because the idea is for our board not to grant so many variances. So if we're creating lots that are not the average size that you showed, then we are going to be putting ourselves in a situation where we would have to grant variances because we created the split. So, my observation.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
This one is particularly difficult because it's damned if you do, damned if you don't, because he has enough property to do the split without a variance. And his method of doing the split creates an irregular-shaped property, which would create a hardship for needing a sunroom variance because the property is crazy-shaped. I also don't like the fact that neither neighbor is on board with this. So that's, it's just not a good situation where there's negative impacts of both outcomes.
So I would agree with you, Mr. Eisenbacher, former vice chairman. I knew it was almost to call you that sometime earlier, so I didn't figure I'd just throw that out there. But having served with you for so many years, you said something earlier, and it's correct. He doesn't need a variance to build his stuff. So that begs the question, as I view myself as more of a strict constructionist and a rule-of-law type of person, and if the city council and the planning commission, through their interfacing back and forth, haven't changed the zoning ordinance, I am very reluctant to ever pass any variance. And I think Ms. Cooper made some very important points. This could happen, which could cause this to happen, which is more variances, and that's not why we're supposed to be here. The proper way for a property owner to take a look at a potential problem that's not related to an irregular-shaped parcel is to address the people's elected representatives and their appointed representatives vis-à-vis the city council and the planning commission to change it, instead of constantly hodgepodgeing through many variance requests, which could have a snowball effect of other variance requests. So, you know, obviously, we know this petitioner, he's been before us. You know, people say that he does fine work. That's wonderful. But at the end of the day, does it meet the requirements that we're charged with? And I think those are those requirements seriously. And so I'm going to vote no tonight, and I don't see a logical reason to vote yes. He's done what he wants, he needs to do to move forward. And if that does create a patchwork of who's cutting weeds and so forth, well, that's the world in which we live in. You know, you can't quell every possible issue. You can't wipe away every tear, nor can you, you know, avoid every skin need. And I think any parent will tell you that. So at the end of the day, you know, I just don't see the logical argument here. And I understand what he's trying to do. That's separate from what we're, our responsibility and really our authority is from my perspective. Any other member of the board? Mr. McCauley?
I want to just get a clarification. I want to make sure, this alternative property has already been bought from the, behind them, so that is part of the lot already? Or is that contingent on being?
I don't have that answer.
Secondly, because, I mean, I even look at this, would the city assessor approve a lot of that irregular shape in that area?
Well, the petitioner's indicating that he would. I didn't ask the city assessor.
Okay. I hope he wouldn't, because I think that creates a mess down the road for a bunch of other people.
But I would further add that that's the issue when we have, just like the last petitioner, seemed like a very nice couple. They make a claim in front of our board that so-and-so said such and such. Well, it may very well be true, but it may very well not be true. Well, it may very well be true, but it may very well not be true, and that's the issue is if you want to prove something, when you, your case comes before this board, you can get it in writing, have someone send an email, and there's even the possibility that there's fraud there potentially with a hacked email account, what have you. But at the end of the day, that's kind of the rule of thumb that I operate by. You know, if the city assessor was asked to weigh in on something, we've had him before our board, he's a very professional gentleman who knows his job very well for the City of Troy, so he could have issued a statement, sent an email, wrote a letter, what have you. I'm not saying that anyone isn't saying the full truth or the facts, but I think we can't consider those comments. It's just third-party hearsay. It's not admissible in a court of law, and it shouldn't necessarily be admissible here. Mr. Eisenbacher?
Just to your point, page 25 of our packets, the letter from the petitioner, he states that the property in question is under contract to purchase and the additional property behind the house is under contract to purchase.
It's not been purchased.
The other thing that occurred to me when our chairman was speaking is that the neighbor that's adjacent is very concerned about her drainage. There's still an opportunity to talk to her, to hopefully work with her to create the drainage and get square properties as a, as a helping each other. One provides drainage, one provides a little bit of property, you don't have to have funny-shaped properties, but when we have a solution, the chairman's point is correct. If there's a solution that works in the zoning ordinance, we're not supposed to give a variance.
Any other member of the board? Vice Chairman Agawas?
Maybe it's because I'm a math guy, but I look at this as an if statement. If hypothetically that 10 feet of land was finalized and the tax assessor approved it, then no variance needed, no government story. If that's not the case, and we need to approve or not approve a lot split, it seems like the hardship was self-created, and it seems that there's enough evidence that it would alter the characteristics and essence of the neighborhood. So I'm open, in fact, I'll float out a motion to deny the variance because of those reasons.
Motion for denial by Vice Chairman Agawas, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Mr. McCauley seconds. So we now have an active motion before the board. Is there any discussion on the Agawas-McCauley resolution? Hearing none, Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes, let me just interject quickly. Yes means what? No means what? Yes means I'm voting in favor of rejecting the petitioner's request. A no vote is to bring it back to the board table for further discussion or for possible no action, which could have the same result. But at the end of the day, a yes vote is in favor of the Agawas-McCauley resolution of rejecting the petitioner's request. For clarification?
No.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Keltzounis?
No.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Agawas?
Yes.
Motion carries. There are four votes in the affirmative for that resolution, so that amendment has been rejected by the board. We move right along to, there's four, yes.
You said it was rejected.
I'm sorry, it was approved. It was agreed to. Good call. Yes, so the amendment, or the resolution is agreed to, and the petitioner's request is rejected thereby. We move on to item number 5C. This is related to 3635 Rochester Road. Mr. Evans, can you please present to us on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on the west side of Rochester Road, north of Big Beaver, near Colebrook. In this zoning map here, the subject, everything you see in orange is a business or commercial zoning, and that includes the subject property. Now, the southern portion of this property is Zone P for parking, and that's this darker area here. And behind and to the west of the property and to the southwest, everything in yellow, those properties are zoned and used for single-family residential. Now, here's a close-up of the subject property. It actually consists of three parcels, but the outline of the yellow are the zoning borders of the property. Now, this is the survey submitted by the petitioner, and the request is to use the building as a place of worship. Now, the zoning ordinance allows this as a matter of right, but there are requirements that places of worship need to meet. One of them is that frontside and rear yard setbacks for buildings must be a minimum of 50 feet. Number two, parking is not allowed within that 50-foot setback. And three, that 50-foot setback area needs to be maintained as open landscaped space. Now, what I've done with the petitioner's survey is outlined the property borders in blue, and the petitioner, and I've traced over it, has indicated the 50-foot setback in red. So it's very clear from the property conditions that significant portions of the building and parking areas are located within that 50-foot setback. We should note that the front setback was called out by the petitioner as apparently from an edge of the sidewalk, so this representative line here for the 50-foot setback should probably be pushed back a little further west. I just want to let everybody know that. But in order to proceed to use this facility as a place of worship, they're going to need a variance from the board on these three matters. So I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there a member of the board who'd like to inquire of our city administration any information or legal advisor? Vice Chairman Agawas?
I seem to be asking a lot of questions today. Just trying to understand the prior owner. So the prior owner was not a place of worship, right?
Right, I believe the existing use or very recent use was a restaurant, and that's been happening, I think, for decades.
And based on the zoning ordinance requirements for a restaurant, did it comply with those zoning ordinances?
You know, this property was developed before the existing zoning ordinance was in place in the 2010 or '12. Some of them may be, I'm thinking others are not, but I haven't looked at it in great detail.
It was originally a retail space.
DSW, I believe.
Yes. Back before everybody shopped at DSW, and you can get in and out without a big problem, not anymore. Okay, so at this point in time, we, I don't see any other member of the board who'd like to discuss this matter or inquire of our city administration, so we are going to call the petitioner forward and his or her representatives. And if you could identify yourself and state to us your relationship to the property in question.
I am the petitioner.
Your name, sir?
Mr. Muhammad Nurul Amin from Adam Community Center.
Good evening.
And a good evening, thank you, for all of you. And we have an attorney, Ms. Amy Decore from Kearney, Michigan. She will represent our condition and the case to in front of you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Amy Decore. I'm the attorney for Council on American Islamic Relations, Michigan, and I'm here representing Adams Community Center. I'd like to start first with a request from the board. I know that there has been submitted three objections to this. One of them I'd like to address specifically, but I'd like to do so after it's been read into the record, so I'd like to reserve the ability to be recalled at that time.
Well, I will state that if you are aware of, we don't go over every specific, the subject matter of any yea or nay from anyone, because anyone in the world could share their opinion with us, and sometimes they do, but the whole point is, we don't, like, the vice chairman will go over the yays and the nays, just so that is, you know, in, with open transparency to the public. But if you want to prosecute someone's statement, you can do it during public comment with everyone else, and, you know, and they, at that point in time, you can talk about anything that you care to. You have that right, it's First Amendment right to free speech in this country.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sure.
So I'd like to go through the statement of practical difficulty, if it's okay, point by point. And I have four main points to those. And the first main point is that the actual practical difficulty with this matter was created by not the previous owner, but the developer who previously made the building. The building is, as stated, a very large substantial building that is in place already. And requiring the 50-foot setback would require the new user, the petitioner, to reduce the size of the building by 61%, which is a very, very substantial portion of the building. It would require a lot of money and a lot of expense for something that's already in existence. And with regards to that, there's already, this specific building in this property is zoned as an A3, which is for a large use-type gathering facility, so, which is the same use type that places of worship are required to have. However, when it's done for a business purpose as opposed to a place of worship, the 50-foot setback is not required. Not requiring commercial businesses to have the 50-foot setback that is required of places of worship in this use type creates a substantial burden on a place of worship and also creates differential treatment based on the fact that it's being used for religious purposes. With regards to this specific property, it is going to be used not only as a place of worship, but also as a community center. The place of worship is actually going to be around roughly, I believe, 12% of the overall use of the building. The remaining building will, the remaining portion of the building will remain with the same characteristics that it already has. It is already set up, as stated previously, as a restaurant and is being used as a restaurant. So the kitchen will remain intact, the restaurant space will remain intact to be used as a banquet facility, as well as for a meeting space and gathering space that will be open to this community and the community at large for other events. The lot itself, if you can look at the lot, the lot itself is not a regular shape. It abuts on one side by residential properties, and it is abutted on the other side by another commercial building which cuts in sort of to the parking space, creating like an irregular dimension and also creating the inability to create more parking or acquire more space for parking. This was not two points, so that goes to point A. The difficulty with complying with the 50-foot setback has specifically to do with, primarily with the parking and also with a little, small portion of the building, but with the, and it was not created by this current owner, or it's not being created by Adams Community Center for the purposes. It was created a long time ago by whoever developed it into a warehouse. So I'd like to talk to, about part E as well. So part E of the statement of practical difficulty requires is that the overall purpose or the use, the new use won't be harmful or create, change the characteristics for which the building is already currently being used. At this point in time, this building is located on Rochester Road. All of the ingress and egress from the parking structure itself is on Rochester Road. It does not ingress or egress on the side street, which is Colebrook Road, that goes into the residential neighborhood. It has no ingress or egress onto that. The parking is completely enclosed by a brick wall all the way around. So, and it's, so it ingresses and egresses specifically onto Rochester Road with all of the other commercial buildings, and Rochester Road is already set up for this type of traffic, so it's not going to impact the traffic in the neighborhood. It's going to only impact the traffic on Rochester Road. And since this is an A3-type facility with over, I believe, over 100 parking spaces, and we're not asking to add additional parking spaces, the traffic that is created by this type of building has already been considered when the approved use, the previous approved use type was put in place. So the second question is, will the variance impair the adequate supply of light to the adjacent properties? It will not. We're not asking for any changes to the building itself, any changes to the structure of the parking lot. We're not asking to do anything different other than use it as it is currently being used, which is a building and a parking lot. And the variance is specifically asking to allow the property to be used as it is currently being used. And would the variance pose a health or safety risk? The answer to that question is no. The current approved building is concurrent with the structural soundness required for this type of use, so because it's already being used as a restaurant, it already, it meets the fire code for that type of building. Because it has already used as an A3-type, large community gathering place, restaurant and commercial business, it has already met all of the requirements for the health, well-being, and safety according to the actual zoning laws. And when it got his, and the proposed use does not alter those requirements at all, so there's no disparate impact on the health, safety, or well-being. Then, we already talked about the shape of the building. So one more point of note is that four blocks from this location, they're located at 3193 Rochester Road in Troy, there is a large, a very, very significantly large church. It's called First Evangelical Community Church. This church has primarily similar characteristics to the building sought by Adams Community Center, and it is a place of worship. It has been, it is actually larger in size than the Adams Community Center, and the lot itself is larger in size. The lot itself abuts to the same, roughly the same number of residential properties on, I believe, the west side of the property as Adams Community Center abuts on the west side of its property. And parking for that church has already been permitted to be used all the way up to the property line where the brick retaining wall that separates the property line, parking lot, from the residential properties are. So this church that has already been approved has substantially the same requirements as Adams Community Center is looking for for their place of worship, and it is already currently allowed to use parking in a similar manner to which Adams Community Center is requesting to use its parking. The only substantial difference between the church that is located at 3193 Rochester Road and the Adams Community Center happens to be the fact that the church itself is larger in size than the Adams Community Center building. And also, that church, the ingress and egress of that church parking lot goes directly onto Heartland, which is a residential property. So it does not, it exits onto Rochester Road, but also has a second road of egress onto to Heartland, which is a residential property, and Adams Community Center building will not have that and does not have that at this time. By requiring Adams to have a different setback for parking, so that the parking, there would not be enough parking spaces, would constitute a substantial hardship to Adams Community Center for its place of worship that is not found in both the commercial buildings that are adjacent to this property as well as to the other religious places of worship that are within four blocks of Adams Community Center. And with that, I will reserve the remaining portion of my argument to respond during open comments to some of the issues that will be addressed. And I would like to say that we, that I know that Mr. Chairman has stated that statements that we have taken from individuals who might be impacted by this because they have adjacent properties are not necessarily, they're like hearsay testimony. We do have property owners who are directly behind this property who are in favor of this because this community center is really intended to serve the entire community of the residents of the City of Troy, who will be patronizing it, as well as the interfaith community at large, and some of those people are in favor of this, and I believe that some of them are even here to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the board for this petitioner's representative? Vice Chairman Agawas?
One thing I just wanted to maybe have you elaborate on, you said it's a user group A3.
Yes.
I try, do you have anything to substantiate that? It's A3? I was looking up, I thought user group A5 was retail and restaurant.
Actually, hang on.
I have the drawing approved by the 2012 and 2017 by user group facility.
Hold on one second. So are you presenting this for entering into the, is that in your packet?
I believe it's in our packet.
Yes.
I do believe it's in our packet.
No reason to share with, we already have it, yeah. You can reference it if you like where you're standing, just that you can't, coming forward would bring it into the record, which we already have it in the record, so you could reference it from where you're standing, sir, because anything you're going to say has to be into that microphone. to say has to be into that microphone, because that is the public record. So, you can't be, you can't come up here and speak to the board members, because it's not on the public record.
I do believe that the drawing that he is referencing for, for the board's reference is labeled as Exhibit B of our application packet.
So, sorry, so what substantiation do you have that is actually an A3 user group?
So, the, we have the site plan that was obtained from the city, where it is marked as an A3-type user, user group on the approved site plan from the city, which is the Exhibit B, which is in, is marked in our, in our application packet.
It's page forty-five of the packet.
Thank you.
Any other member for this petitioner's representative? Ms. Cooper.
I don't know. It's a general comment at large. At the last planning commission meeting, we had some discussion about traffic. I am concerned about traffic. I tried to seek an appointment.
Excuse me, let me just ask, inquire of you, is this related to acquiring of the petitioner?
Yes, because I want to say that, saying that there is no impact to the Rochester Road, there is potential impact to Rochester Road with the use of this as a banquet facility. I think that that's kind of different from a restaurant. I just want to point that out. A restaurant doesn't have the same patterns of usage as a banquet facility would.
To that end, the restaurant itself is approved for a hundred and fifty parking spaces. Popular restaurants fill up all of those hundred and fifty parking spaces at peak times, such as dinner, breakfast time, lunchtime, dinnertime. And a banquet facility is very much similar to that, where they might be filling up the parking spaces at peak times when there is a, an event there. But it's no different than a parking lot from a restaurant, filling up and utilizing all of the assigned parking spaces. And in, and in consideration of that, when the governing body of the city of Troy determine what parking spaces are necessary for any type of facility, specifically a restaurant and also, that's also attached, at one time, there was a restaurant attached to a commercial building, retail storefronts. And by approving that and by permitting that type of use with a specific amount of parking spaces, they have already, the legislative body of Troy has already taken into consideration what would be required should that facility be completely filled up and completely used. Therefore, the parking, we're not asking for additional parking spaces. We're asking to be able to use what was already approved by the legislator for that type of purpose. Thank you.
Any other member of the board for this petitioner? Okay, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
So, at this point, I'm going to ask Vice Chairman Agalas to address us on the communications that came in in favor and in opposition to this request.
We have three in favor, two noes and one with concerns leaning no. So, call three and three.
Gotcha. Thank you, Vice Chairman. So, at this point in time, before I open up the public hearing, I'm just going to ask a simple question. This is not verbal. This is a very quiet hand vote, and this does not, this is not going to sway any vote that happens up here, but it's going to indicate to this board and this chairman where the public, which is very demonstrably here tonight, is on this one and only one question, and that is this. If you intend to address this board on this matter verbally, you yourself, please raise your hand. Okay, so that's quite a few hands. Thank you very much for helping. So, at this point in time, this board can consider limiting public comment so we can actually hear everyone. And so, if we don't have a time limitation, someone could take fifteen minutes, another person could take twenty-five, another person could take forty-five, and then, of course, a lot of spouses of members are not going to be happy tonight. So, what we have to do, but we have to basically consider that we have a responsibility to listen to the good people who come to share their opinion. So, is, we can do a time limit. City Council does it regularly on popular or hot topics. I'm not going to always say popular is hot, but anyway, we can do a time limitation, and I know the city council on a regular basis does a three-minute rule. And there is this box here, which gives us the, you know, green light to go, and then the yellow about the end, and the red means you've met your third, three minute. We can approve this if the board majority thinks that's important. I, myself, believe that it's probably very advisable. That way, everyone can be heard. And then, also, if somebody very eloquently argues a point, the next person who is completely in agreement with that one point can just stand up and say, "I agree with the gentleman who just spoke." Boom. We don't have to hear every word for the three minutes. We can understand that that person, and maybe perhaps many, many more, are in total agreement with those spoken words. So, it's a way to process this very full chamber and a lot of people's opinions very efficiently. So, is there a motion to the effect to impose the three-minute rule on this one agenda item only? Mr. McCauley.
Tonight's my night. I'll make the motion to impose the three-minute time limit for public forum.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Vice Chairman Agalas seconds that? So, at this point in time, Mr. Evans, well, first of all, we have to have discussion on it. Is there a discussion by a member of the board on this important matter? Vice Chairman Agalas.
Before we jump into potentially many more topics, has anyone here on the board, has it come before the board, anything about the First Evangelical Church? Has that, in the years that we've sat on here, ever come across?
I would just say no. I guess Mr. Eisenbacher wants to address that. That church has changed hands. That's, that property is originally my church's location, which moved to North Troy, and that has changed hands by my count two times since my church moved out. It could be three, but that's never been before this board, because I've been on this board every new owner or any new congregation. But, and that's a question I'm going to have for Mr. Evans, I think after this vote, just to talk about, there was conversation about two parcels on Rochester Road, both, one potentially a house of worship and a community center. One is a house of worship. Just, I would want to confirm that that's, we're talking apples to apples as far as same zoning district, but that's, we'll inquire of the city administration a little bit later. Onto the matter in front of us, that's been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the three-minute rule being approved? Because that's what the motion is for, approval of that. See none? Mr. Evans, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Keltounis.
A yes is to impose the three-minute rule.
The three-minute, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Agalas.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. McCauley.
Yes.
Motion passes. So, we're going to work this thingy here, and that's going to be the guy who wear the side. We, we've, I don't think we've ever used it in all my years on this board, and that's many, that's many years, but we rarely have had a crowd this high. So, I think it's important, because we really want to get a flavor of what people think, and we want to hear from them. So, at this point in time, we are going to open the public hearing, and I'm just going to basically ask once again for some decorum. If you hear something that you don't like from this microphone, from one of your neighbor's mouths, under our constitution, they have a right to state an unpopular opinion. And if you don't agree, too bad, because that's our system of government that our amazing founders gave to us in this country. And the First Amendment, because I studied in college, but I'm not a lawyer, protects the minority. It protects people who aren't the popular of the moment. So, please, no cat calls, disagreements, verbal antagonism, because it doesn't serve anyone's good purpose. And people can be good-natured and moral-charactered and have different opinions, right? I know. I see that at my family dinners all the time. So, at the end of the day, we're going to basically just ask for decorum. And if I have to use the gavel, I'm going to, and that is an indication that you can be asked to be leave, to be forced from the chamber. We don't, we've never done that, not under my leadership, and I didn't even know this thing existed until about seven years into my board term here. So, we rarely have ever used it. So, we do use it to open the public hearing. So, if you would like to address this board within the three-minute rule on this matter, please step forward. And in the essence of being expeditious, because I did work in logistics many years ago, we know how to move people and things around really quickly, you can line up so people are clearly the next in line. So, there's no question, because whenever we question who's next, that's three or four minutes to get that person up. So, if you can begin the line, starting at about the second row, and I'll just ask everyone to come up, and if the queue gets filled up, don't worry, we're going to have more people and we're going to hear from you as we go. But making sure that this row is filled up with people who want to speak their mind is going to ensure that we're going to get through everything orderly and quickly. So, I'm going to call this person up right here. Please come forward. Good evening, welcome, and please identify who you are.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Before we get started, just so everybody's aware, so when you start speaking, I'm going to hit the timer. There's three lights on top of the timer to the left of the chairman. When it blinks yellow, that means you have one minute, and when it turns red, you'll hear a tone, and that means your comment is done.
Okay. So, let's just go over this real quickly. When you're ready to go, you're going to get green. When it's one minute, you're going to get what?
Yellow.
And when your time is done, please end at red, because we have a lot of good-natured people to hear from. Please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Omar. I came from Hamtramck, actually. I have traveled many cities. Whenever a mosque is moved or worship placed, it brings a blessing to the community, it raise the value of the area, and the prayer time that the people are most coming, no traffic at that time. The issue of traffic is out of there, because it's nine o'clock or five PM in the morning, so nobody's there at that time. So, the traffic will be less. It's not like a restaurant that people are coming in and out. That's the traffic time. And the value of the area will go up, and the people who are in that community will feel base and security. We come from Detroit, hostile area, and now today, when that mask is there in Miller, most of the people knows that it's a peaceful place, neighbors like that place, and it's a blessing for all the people to come, and we welcome everybody. Islam is a Christian society, we agree, and welcome to everybody. I'll be less than my time, and if they hear me and they are listening to my advice, I will take them back to Detroit to get the blessing, and also, this is the top of the cream of our society in Michigan, and I hope their blessings, they will come back to Detroit, and they are most welcome to have, you know, many, many vacant areas and established mosques and slavish schools, and I hope Detroit will entertain that. I thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you. So, he gets a special blessing, because he was under the three-minute rule. That's amazing. So, we like that. We want more of that. So, thank you. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Sure. My name is Moi Aschad. Address is six, five, seven and eight, Edith Court, Troy, Michigan. I'm a resident of Troy for the last twenty years, and I am a business owner at Troy. Well, as one of the member in the board was mentioning, that this was DSW. And, yes, DSW, and it, at the time, it was, I think, a lot of people are coming in and going, and that what the suggestion was, and I agree with that. The parking lot, it stays the same, that's what I heard from the petitioner, so there won't be any additional parking spots or traffic load. When there's a DSW or even a restaurant, there can be time where it interferes with the regular high traffic. As I think, I mean, I drive that road almost every day, taking, going to work, coming to eat food, lunch and all that, I go to that area. And I don't think that granting variance would change characteristic of that area. In fact, it will probably help the businesses. Being a business owner, I really believe that. And one additional thing struck my mind, that for business, it's the same area for business, we are letting them use that for the same hundred and fifty or whatever parking spot. Why are we putting additional hardship, undue hardship for a religious organization? That struck my mind. It's same place, same parking lot, and we're just putting on undue hardship for, since they're religious organization. That's what my read was. So, it really disturbed me. I don't know how to address it, maybe through our elected representative to address that. So, what I think is, what I believe is granting variance will not change the characteristic, and in addition, that prayer time is, does not match with the peak time. On Rochester Road, the peak time is morning, usually seven to nine, and evening, four to six. Usually, the prayer times, which are five time the entire day, it does not match with that. So, it will not really put on additional load on already existing traffic time. With that, I would request the board to approve the variance and bring some, like the other gentlemen said, bring some blessing and obviously some good business to our neighbor also. Thank you very much for, to the board.
Thank you.
Inspector Chairman, board members and the city officials, my name is M.T. Azafar. I reside at two, three, eight, four Lorenzo Drive, Sterling Heights. I have been working in Troy for twenty-plus years, about three miles from the subject Adams Community Center building, and I'm a board member of Adams Community Center. I believe you see three letters on file from local residents, and actually, I reached out to a couple of them. In fact, one of them reached out to us, and we had a discussion with them, and I think we can come to an agreement, address their concern. The second one, I, Mr. and Mrs. Daly, they declined to discuss that with me when I called them, and they would prefer to do that at the board meeting, and our attorney will address that. So, the Adams Community Center, actually, in my opinion, will be a great place for youth and elderly in Troy, arguably the two most vulnerable groups in our society. We intend to offer youth-centric programs, help with schoolwork, the importance of doing well at school, the awareness about the scourge of drugs so rampant in every community now, of serving your community, of being involved in civic activities. We all aspire our children to become morally upright and responsible citizens. There's no better way to do that than involving them in community work that instills universally accepted values of honesty, integrity and kindness, values that honor the golden rule of doing to others what you want to be done to you, the spirit of community work and giving, just as you are all doing here on this board. The elderly will be able to socialize, share stories, discuss issues essential for older folks to stay happy and healthy and keep a sense of belonging that many of them don't feel nowadays and really need. Adams Community Center will enhance Troy's rich religious and cultural diversity and neighbor-friendly place that would be all-inclusive regardless of faith, ethnicity and gender. For the sake of the elderly and the youth and the local community, I urge the board to approve the variance. It can all be a positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. I'm Mahmud Sayad, seventeen years Troy residence, a businessman and a Troy Police volunteer as well. I live in this neighborhood, and this property happens to be in my neighborhood. Just a wall is dividing me and the property. When I heard about it and I got this letter from the city, I wanted to get some information about what's going on in the property and was, who's coming in there, and I talked to the board members here and some other community members as well. I figured out that, with some research done on these things here, I figured out that if you go too close to a church or a community center, it's always safe to live. As a residential place, it's always safe. It brings more security to the place, and it's, even though there's a little bit more traffic, but you become safe, because always there is a traffic and public there on the, on this area. Then, I also talked to them about the activities and what they're going to bring here. They're going to, they say they're going to keep the restaurant for a community service, and then they're going to start a prayer place in there, a small, another portion which is not used as of yet. They will, they're going to bring the free education to the community program. They've been conducting this program for the last three years, free ACT and SAT courses they've been conducting for the students who cannot afford to pay good money. They also are trying to bring a medical program for the low-paid community, like, who cannot, low-income community, who cannot afford. So, they're going to provide free medical screening and free medical service. They have youth development program, and- They have youth development program, and are more interested in their interfaith programs. They're going to bring interfaith programs in this community here, which we are lacking at this time. This whole thing is supported by fully funded by the community themselves, and they are, and they're more, I spoke to some elderly people as well, and they are interested that if something are come to nearby, they will be more comfortable to go there themselves, drive for a few minutes, and go and then come back, and they can benefit, take the full advantage of free help for their children. And of course, I'm a businessman, so I consider that when you move it to the closer, the community center or prayer place, the property values goes up. So that gives me more boost. I got a couple of property right next to the building here, so I'm very comfortable and confident, and I would ask for your support for the approval of this variance.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. My name is Gary King. I'm a thirty-three-year resident of Rain Tree Village, which is a subdivision directly across Rochester Road from this facility. I applaud these folks. These have been very, very polite, very considerate folks tonight, and I appreciate that. However, I come here to stand in objection to rezoning and offering a change in variance to a facility that we have already dealt with a lot of changes in Rain Tree Village. You've approved a variance to a large, high-rise storage facility that overlooks the Rain Tree Village, which is not very much appreciated by the folks who live there. In the back of our sub, we have a bunch of small cluster homes going in, fourteen-hundred square foot homes going in at the back where the school system sold the property. We're not necessarily very happy about that. There are a number of electronic signs that are spread throughout our part of Rochester Road. We are just not happy with what's been going on with the zoning board. We ask that you very, very seriously consider making any changes to your zoning at this point, and the variances that are required to get folks into anything, and I certainly am not against this great group of people that are sitting behind me. But I would just say that you created your zoning regulations for a reason. To come in here and begin making substantial changes is like fitting a size seven in a size nine. So I, or let's go a size nine in a size seven, if you would. So I would ask that you consider not changing your zoning regulations. Thank you, folks, for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Trish Ruell. I live at fourteen sixty-five Bloomingdale Drive. One of the people that sent a letter to Mr. Evans and discussed with Mr. Evans this property. My husband and I have been in Troy for twenty-seven, twenty-eight years now, and we would like to request that you approve this variation. We actually own one of two residential properties that abut this place. We're in the southwest corner of the property, so my backyard on nine twenty-five Colebrook, and my east side of the yard is what is right against that parking lot. The current owner has kind of let it go. There's dirt all through the property, there's trees growing up. We have a privacy fence, and I have a concern about the privacy from the parking lot to this property at nine twenty-five Colebrook. And the current owner's trees are knocking the fence down on us. Now, I met with a member of the board for this community center, as well as the petitioner, and they were both very positive about being willing to work with me and work with the planning board to improve the fence, put something in that lets light through and has green space, maybe plant tall trees, or do something that would cause us to have more privacy on the property, but at the same time would not, you know, detract from having green space or anything like that, which we currently don't have. The backyard has a brick fence between it and the parking lot. Now, I don't live there. I bought our house in Bloomingdale we had built many, many years ago. We've bought a couple of houses in Troy for our adult kids to live in, because we love what you guys do and what the city of Troy represents so very, very much. And we actually bought this property and are renting it out to a gentleman after we did substantial repairs. He's living there with his two young children. Quite honestly, I'd much rather have a community center with people from the community coming in and frequenting the place than whoever comes to half the building that's vacant and the other half that has a restaurant with who-knows coming in. So I'd like to thank you very much for your time tonight, and again, I do have a letter I sent to Mr. Evans, and I'm one of those people, yep, that's me, and just show you that I do approve of this, and would hope that you would vote in favor. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ted Tice. I've lived in Troy my whole life, almost thirty-seven years. I currently live in the properties behind this proposal and the subdivisions behind there, and I would like to follow up with Mr. King. I'm kind of on the same board with him. A lot of the things that he brought up and changing the, you know, changing the rules that we have already laid out to, you know, accommodate this variance, I have a lot of concerns to go along with this. I know that they said traffic wouldn't be an issue because of peak times and whatnot, but I don't know if you guys are familiar with this area, but Colebrook leads right to Waddles Elementary School, and all the school buses come out there, and trying to pull out there as it is right now is horrific. That's a big concern for me, and I'm also concerned, too, if there's like only a hundred parking spots in there, what's overflow plan? You know, I've never seen a banquet hall with a hundred parking spots. So I don't, I don't know how that works out, and that kind of leaves like a gray area for me to kind of think about and just kind of, you know, raise an eyebrow and question that. And I know that you guys are where you're at because of what you do, and you do a really good job, and I hope that you guys take the time to ask these questions and work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. My name's Al Lindsay, in the Rain Tree subdivision. I'm a resident of Troy for about thirty years, and I'm just concerned, a general concern, that we keep rezoning and providing variances in commercial properties. We're all pretty upset about the four-story storage building and the big signs that are up on Rochester Road, and we think that we have zoning rules for a reason, and I'd like to suggest that you adhere to the zoning rules they have now and not provide a variance. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nilofar Abdelhamid. I'm a resident of the city of Troy since four years, and we live in five nine six East Big Beaver Road, and I also walk in Troy and John R. Road. It'll be great if you can approve the Adam Community Center as per the plan, whatever our colleagues have already said. The one thing what I'm hearing is about the traffic. My daughter goes to Waddles Elementary School, so I normally drop her in the morning, and then I have to go back to John R., and I normally take the Colesbrook Road, Vanderpool, and then I take the Rochester Road. The peak hours are from seven to nine. See, the traffic is really slow-moving, but our prayer timings are five times. So early morning, that sunrise, during that time, Rochester Road is totally empty, and the only concern probably, it might be in the evening hours. So that hours, like, we have a lot of restaurants nearby, so we normally go to a lot of restaurants. So it takes like five or seven minutes for us to reach to the restaurant when we take a Michigan U. and get into the restaurant. So hopefully, I really believe that you guys will approve the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Bilal Ghazi, and I have a business two blocks down. His name's Akbar Marketplace. So this community is trying to buy this property. I am very happy to hear that. They collect money from the many, many peoples, and now some variance coming, so I'm broke. I hope if this community come here, and my business will go up. So from my heart, I wish and will be approved, this will be come down here at the community center.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Honorable Councilmen and Councilwomen, respected officials and guests, I would like to greet everyone with the universal greeting of our faith. May the peace and blessings of God be upon you all. As a resident of the city of Troy and a participant at the Adam Community Center, I would like to present to everyone in this gathering regarding one of the fundamental objectives in establishing our center. That objective is to have a proper facility where we are able to educate the members of our congregation regarding our faith. The role of religious education that we seek to promote are the values of servitude, social justice, and the common good for the general welfare of society. All of this is with the vision of producing a healthy society of men and women who are able to fulfill their duties and obligations towards their Creator and their community. One of the teachings of our faith is that the most beneficial person in a society is that individual who is able to give benefit back to the society. With this in mind, we hope to instill the community values of righteousness, courtesy, respect, and tolerance, all of which will add to the social fabric of our country and promote a healthy society of law-abiding citizens that will be able to give benefit to our greater community. I conclude with these brief words explaining one of the beneficial objectives of our center, which is to serve as a place for religious education that we intend to establish in our city of Troy. I fully approve and support the proposal of Adam C.C., and I hope you do as well. Thank you, and may the peace and blessings of God be upon you all.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. My name is Austin Hans. I've lived in and around the city of Troy for most of my life, and not quite as young as I look. So I'd like to take the opportunity to urge the council to consider this request. I think to have an organization that's here to serve the community, benefits the community, and I've taken the opportunity to spend some time to observe the site and the traffic around it, and I appreciate the objections that were raised, but I haven't seen anything that would lead me to believe that there are significant considerations that would be, would precipitate from this. So I think that there will be a great benefit to the community, and I don't think that there would be a negative impact from changing the use of the facility which already exists on the site. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello.
Hi. My name is Sarwad Siddiqui. I'm a resident of three nine six two Mesa Drive. I own two houses in Troy. I'm living for nineteen years, paying a taxes combined value of about twenty-two thousand dollars every year. My whole family is here, especially the youngest one is eleven years old, and he's very excited. He's asking everyone, Daddy, must they approve it? Approve it! So I said, no, it's going to take some time. So, you know, I support this idea, and it is very close to our home. It's about half a mile from our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. My name is Zahin Hussain. I've lived in Troy my entire life, which is nineteen years, and I've gone through the Troy school system, specifically Wausse Elementary School, Larson Middle School, and Troy Athens High School. At the moment, I'm studying at university. If there's been one thing I've learned, or one theme of the Troy School District, it would be one of equality and diversity, and I actually, I see that in the city. I see it all the time with just the diversity of cultures. But I think the lack of a Muslim community center is sort of a blemish on the image of the city. It's sort of this separation between what I've seen in my time in the Troy School District and when you actually look out in public. And so I, of course, support this variance, because I think whatever is required for us to have a community center that's representative of our subset of the community and the community at large is important. And along with that, I've actually tutored some kids at Adam Community Center right now in their current building. So it was actually in math, so it's not a unsubstantial part of what this community center represents. There's a lot of intellectual development through math, sciences, A.C.T., and in general, I think it'd be a great benefit to the city of Troy and what the city of Troy represents. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. This is Moyn Mirza. I reside in twenty-one seventy-three Mayflower Drive, four eight zero eight five. I'm a member of Adam Community Center, and I'm raising my two daughters here, they're present, along with my wife, and this community center is vital for their development, their moral, social, and spiritual development. So I would expect you'll approve this variance. As explained, there is no change from the existing structure or any other parking structure, so it can be used as is as Adam Community Center. I would like to point out another aspect of religious places in emergency situations. Example comes to my mind is in Iona, in two thousand and fourteen, there was flooding in August, heavy flooding. Iona in Warren, many of the volunteers helped the residents surrounding the place for their cleanup effort after the flooding. And I have seen last year, you know, many churches and mosques in Houston area, they have helped the residents tremendously, along with the authority, to help get them out or serve the meal, things like that. And I expect, and we believe, that Adam Community Center will do similar things in future if it's provided and reside in this facility. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, allowing me to speak in front of you. My name is Anwar Hussain. I live in two two six six Radcliffe Drive, Troy. I'm a Troy resident over twenty-six years. I have a real estate business in Troy. I own quite a few houses in Troy and Rochester Hills. And let me tell you, Troy, the reason I chose Troy, because I lived in Lansing, I lived in Enarbar, I lived in Kalamazoo, and finally, I decided to move to Troy, because Troy is one of the best diverse city in Michigan. That's one of the things we can always proudly say that Troy represent the whole world. But unfortunately, Troy have almost seventy-two religious churches and community centers. There is not one for this group of people, and we are trying to establish one, so we can represent almost three, four thousand resident of this city as a part of this city, and we like to be involved in every activity of the city. And as far as the couple concerned, my fellow Troy resident brought up, you know, we are not going to change anything in the building. Building and surrounding area are going to stay as it is. Parking structure are going to stay as it is. The trees and everything are going to stay as it is. Only thing will be changed is inside activity. So I can assure you, my fellow Troy resident, that we are not going to change the environment, we are not going to increase the traffic flow, we are not going to increase the environmental any damage, and I request all the board members, think about it. If you'd like to see a true diverse city, please approve this community center, and we'll be representing all the religion of the world and all their religious services in Troy. So it'll be a true diverse community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you're out of order. Sir, you're out of order.
No, I have, I was supposed to agree to.
You would need to stand in this line and then, yes, there's no public gallery agreement, disagreement. That's in clear violation of the rules. Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. It's disrespecting the people who want to speak here. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmen, Councilwoman. Thank you very much for having this hearing this evening. I just wanted, my name's Navid Bajwa. I'm thirty-four years old. I've been living in Troy pretty much my whole life. I was about a year old when I came here. I went to Montessori in Troy, the Montessori on Seventeen and Waddles. It wasn't called Brookfield Academy back then. I went to Barnard Elementary School, class of ninety-five, to Baker Middle School, class of ninety-eight. By the way, Mr. McCauley, I had you as a sixth-grade math teacher, sir. Thank you very much. I'm forever indebted to you. And Athens High School, class of oh-two. I think as some of the individuals that spoke before me mentioned, I think one of the great strengths of the city of Troy is the diversity, the cultural, religious, et cetera, diversity, and I think it's very kind of... I think as some of the individuals that spoke before me mentioned, I think one of the great strengths of the city of Troy is the diversity, the cultural, religious, et cetera diversity, and I think it's very kind of, it's symbolic of this great nation and the melting pot of America, you know? And as some of the individuals before me mentioned that there's a growing Muslim community over here in the city of Troy, and we need, you know, to have our own mosque, just fulfill the needs of the Muslim community that's continuing to grow. And, you know, the purpose also is also, as some of the individuals that spoke before me said, that to not only fulfill our needs, but also to do service to the community at large, you know, to do a lot of interfaith work with other religious institutions, churches, synagogues, et cetera, to, you know, kind of break some of the stereotypes that many Americans have about Muslims and Islam, and also to do community service, help the community out, to do community service, help the poor, et cetera. But I think I speak on behalf of not only myself, but my family and the Muslim community here at large, when I say that we would all be very greatly appreciative to all of you if you could override the fifty-foot setbacks that are in place and grant us permission to open this up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Frank Daly, and this is my wife, Tracy. We are the residents that sit directly behind this property, and we want to just state again, we've added the emails to the council earlier yesterday, and just wanted to say that it's something that we oppose just because we live behind it.
We want the fifty-foot variance. We don't, I mean, we want to make sure that that's imposed. We've, when we built, when we bought the house, we understood it was designer DSW and Sakura, there has never been more than forty to fifty cars max, ever. My concern is, they built this as a banquet facility, we're gonna be hearing car alarms all night, we're gonna be hearing chit-chat all night. We don't want that. That's totally gonna affect my property value in sense. I can't go out, sit in my backyard, or go to sleep because I'm getting woken up because of, you know, stuff going on. With that fifty-foot variance, with that there, that could help. They could have easily bought, there's a house right there on the corner that was for sale, they could have bought that, and they could have even asked how we used to buy that if they wanted more parking facilities. My concern is, you're gonna get problems on Rochester Road, besides the fact of what we're gonna get of noise on our property. That's our real beef about the toll. I don't have any problem with them going, if they want to do it, then they need to shrink this facility and go by what the rules are in the rules. That's basically what I think I have to say.
Yeah, I just think, again, it's gonna be added congestion to the area down the street from a elementary school, and that region is very busy from the time seven to nine. And again, we just put our voice in that we object to any variance.
We're strongly checked. Thank you.
Well, since you took one slot, you have another three minutes if you want it, but thank you.
We're just wanting to-
Just wanted to let you know, you both each had an optional three minutes. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Someone say something now? Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to specifically address the concerns by Mr. and Mrs. Daly. That was the concerns that I was speaking about in the email that they submitted previously. My first point of concern with their statement is that they stated that they were directly behind the subject property. That is factually inaccurate. They, their property does not touch the property. They are at least a block or more away from this property, and the exit from their house is not even on Colbeck Street. It is on a completely different street, so they don't pass this property at all. So they are not directly behind this property, and therefore would not directly be impacted by the fact that there's no fifty-foot setback on the back of the property. The second point of contention is that their testimony regarding the amount of cars that have ever been there is not relevant, considering the fact that the legislative body of the city of Troy have taken into consideration the maximum number of cars that they would allow there by assigning one hundred and fifty parking spaces for this type of use of property for the restaurant and commercial building. Therefore, the legislative body of the city of Troy has already anticipated that at any given time, there could be a maximum of one hundred and fifty cars parked there with people entering and exiting the commercial building, including the restaurants, where people go together as families and groups of people and gather at the same time. So the fact that there may or may not have been one hundred and fifty cars there at the same time is not relevant because the city of Troy has already determined that that is permissible with this use type. I'd like to just reiterate also that we are not, there's many concerns addressed so far from some of the residents about changing the rules, the zoning rules. We're not asking for any of the zoning rules to be changed. We're actually requesting an enforcement of the rules because we are requesting a permissible variance within the actual legislative rules of the zoning laws. We're not asking for any zoning rules to be changed. We're just asking for a variance, which is, which is a given prerequisite of the zoning ordinance. They, I'd also like to reiterate that we've heard from four of the six properties that touched this property, the owners of those properties, four out of the six property owners whose property directly touches this property are in favor of this variance. They believe that it will enhance the characteristics of the community and not deter from it. I've, we've also heard of concerns about the nature of the new buildings that are going up because of this four-story storage building. We're not asking to change anything that's on the property. We're not asking to change the characteristic of the building. We're not asking to add anything. We're asking to use what is already there and anticipated for use by the legislator. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw the couple that just spoke a second ago, and they heard the comments from the young lady, and they do have a reserved three minutes if they prefer to come up. And so what we're gonna do is, I don't know how many people are still in line, but I'm gonna let them come, I'm gonna let them come up now and take their reserved three minutes because it's based on the comments that this young lady made about their comments, so I think this is appropriate.
Can you show a map?
Wait for the green.
Yep.
Green's coming. There you go. Please proceed.
So I, my wife and I live at 889 Hidden Ridge, which is directly behind and is the closest to the building and one of the exits of that building.
So I don't know how she figures, we're not directly behind it. We hear everything, the whole parking lot, we see everything, we planted bushes, everything. There's a walk. I mean, we are directly there. It affects us directly.
There's only really two residents that butt up against that. We're the one on the west side and 925 Colebrook. 881 doesn't touch the property.
There's a facility behind it.
And the 3651, which is north, is a business. It's a restaurant. And 3615 is a restaurant also. Those are neighbors, of course, but they're not residential neighbors.
925 and 889 is the one that's gonna be affected directly because we're right there in the parking lot, so.
So, again-
We're the one that's gonna hear, pardon me?
Ma'am, you're out of order. Please. Thank you.
And I, just to comment for her, she is the owner of the 925, but she does not live there. That place just was sold recently, from what I understand, and I don't know if anyone's living there right now, or they're renting, but we don't see anybody.
Doesn't matter. We're just, we just want to rebuttal on, yes, we do live behind it, yes, that does affect us directly.
Thank you. I think we've established where you live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, sir.
Hello. I think my turn now.
Yeah, is that the old green or the new green?
Oh, it's a new green.
We're gonna give you the new green.
Ah, thank you. My name's Aleem Ali. I'm a forty-three-year resident of Troy, and actually, my son, I think was in your class, Ibrahim, and you're gonna get my next son, Mustafa. He's coming, he's starting, he's starting sixth grade this year.
Retired.
Oh, well, congratulations. So I have to go to Rochester Hills to go to a community center similar to what this is going to be, or I have to go to Bloomfield Hills or Warren. And it's a real shame that, you know, being a resident of Troy for so many years, I have to leave Troy so often to take my children to a community center and a place of worship. So my point is, you know, is a glaring issue for Troy, being as diverse as we are, and we don't have a community center for the Muslim population. So that is my point, and I think I have one, two more minutes to go.
Sir, have a good night. Wait for the new green, please. There you go. Please proceed when you have a voice.
My name is Javi Surti, and I live in the same neighborhood. This property at, like, the other side, it falls on the Colebrook and Allen Row, and I live at Allen Row and Vanderpool, and same concern. He said, like, we have to leave for the, our, to offer our religious duty out of the city. That is one thing. Second thing about the diversity, when we talk about the diversity, is the gentleman mentioned that seventy-five churches we have, and the population-wise, I don't have exact number, but at least, at least we have five percent, and for five percent, we don't have any religious place to offer our religious duty. Second thing, the city, they have laws for the fifty feet, but there is always exception that if I consider, or if I give you an example of the Olympic, that is the diverse, just to combine the countries, like, they have wild card entry, that there is an exception to offer opportunity for less fortunate or minorities. So that is the same thing we are looking from this city and this member and community members that give us a chance because I have seen the church on the tromley, middle of the street, and sometimes I see the activity, those are healthy activities, like they arrange community event, they invite everyone, they have horse riding, and they set up the place structure. So those kind of activities, we are looking here, and that will not be for the specific community. They set up the, as earlier it is mentioned, ACT classes, SAT classes. So it is the same neighborhood. This property falls in the Water Elementary School, and that is the same elementary school I have. I have two daughters, and it will be very convenient place for us, and I hope it will be, like, whatever the concern the city resident has, it will go away when they will see those healthy activity. Also, like, when you don't have one place for one community, so when we talk about the diversity, when you have to approach, who to approach, where to go, if you don't have one single place. If you have one single place, I have seen a lot of religious place, and it is not about the political things. A lot of members, they go there and they show, they ask for the vote and opinion just to address those folks, or if any concern about any issues. So they go to one place, they are looking single-point contact. In this case, there is no single place to go and to-
Thank you very much.
Good.
Hello, sir.
Hi. Don Gergen. I live in the Stone Ridge neighborhood, near Square Lake and Dequinder, and there's nothing that I'm more in favor of than places of worship. We have probably seven, maybe eight, within a mile of our house. The thing I'm concerned, I was asked to come here on behalf of some of the people in the neighborhood, right behind, just west of the, of this location. I remember years ago, Troy proposed a sports complex at the community center. That was turned down on a basis of traffic and noise and just overbearing for the city of Troy traffic. I've been a Troy resident since seventy-nine, and I've seen Troy grow, and I've seen gridlock on the streets of Troy, literal gridlock on the streets of Troy. Ms. Cooper said that traffic is horrendous, and I, I'm all in favor of places of worship, but that location couldn't be much worse, in my opinion. Traffic on Rochester Road is not only during rush hour, I avoid traffic, or I avoid Rochester Road on Saturdays because the traffic is so bad, and that's probably because of the places of business, but I think that location is not good for the longtime people of Troy that have grown up here and seen it grow and lived with the gridlock on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Taulant. I serve as the Director of the Balkan American Community Center right on Big Beaver. I've been with that center about ten years, and I wouldn't find any better words to congratulate any community center that would be, be built in the city of Troy, the city of more than eighty countries. As previous people mentioned, you have, we have one of the most diverse city, and I saw that grow through these ten years, 2008, 2010. I do oppose the word of the melting pot. I support the word of a mixing salad, where all these communities bring their flavors, they bring their, their beauty, where everybody can learn, and there is so much that we can learn from, from these people. I, we do serve the Balkans, we have Albanians, Bosnians, Greek, Romanian, Bulgarians, and during these ten years, we didn't just serve them, we served communities at large. I had the pleasure to meet some of these folks coming to my place. I had the pleasure to meet so many others, and that we have learned so many things. Another thing that I want to emphasize more than anything, when we build community centers like this, we provide a safe heaven for the next generation. I have had the pleasure to shake the hands of the future Harvard lawyers that have passed through those doors, the future Ivy League students that have passed through those doors, and I, I do see that future also in this center. Not a better place than in Rochester, where we'd have a full exposure to the communities, not limited to these people, communities at large, that they would be able to serve with all the services and not limited just to the religious preferences that might have. Thank you very much. That's my question.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Noor Awad Noor. I am a business owner in Troy, Michigan. I am, I own, I own a few blocks business south of that building. I'm the owner of Avis Budget Car and Truck Rental. I have about fleet of two hundred cars in my fleet, and I don't think I cause any, any traffic. Mr. McCauley is one of my customers, and also a teacher of my kids, long time ago. So I do support the proposal to allow the variance, please, and establish this place as a place of community and a place of worship. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just make a determination about how many more? So let me just ask my colleagues on the board, since it is after nine-thirty, we've been going at this for two hours, would we prefer to take a break, to use restroom and to stretch our legs, or should we listen to the rest of the people in line, knowing full well other people may still infill who haven't gotten in line because that's what they've been doing, people have been doing all night? So do we want to take a five-minute respite, or?
Well, it blazes on. It's bathroom.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir. We're gonna ask you to just hold in place. Everyone's standing in line, you don't have to stay right there, just kind of remember, because your neighbors will remember where you were in relation to where they were. So I'm sorry, we're gonna use the restroom. If you're in the gallery, if you want to just go out, the men will be to your right, the men's room, the ladies' room will be to the left, and there are other restroom facilities in the, so we'll take about a five-minute break, and I'll convene our session back, so we stand at ease for right now.
Located certain space, they have considered the traffic flow situation on the Rochester Road before allocating that much space for that plot. Okay? Second thing, I go to pray, you know, and I know at any given time, the number of cars, the number of parking spots occupied is probably fraction of what the allocated space would be. So at any given time, we should not have any concern for the traffic congestion, even if for, if it's full, that city of Troy has permitted it, but in practicality, at any given time, it will be less than the allocated parking, you know, capacity. Second thing, a third thing, regarding the noise, you know, you know, I have observed, I've not observed any additional noise in front, in outside of any religious organization, be it church, mosque, than a commercial organization. So if the concern is a noise and chit-chat, what if this is place is given to, is not given to Adam C.C., but some other, some other person, like some other business occupier, like a bar or something? People would be hearing noise from young people by 2:00 a.m., and, you know, so, but right now, these organizations, they are very quiet, and their activities normally end around sunset, or, you know, soon after that. So there won't be late, any late-night activities or cho, noise, which would actually be worse if it was given, or it was owned by some bar or some other business, you know? So that's what, these are the three things which I wanted to share with you guys. So I would request again to approve this petition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before the lady speaks, I just want to know, how many more people would like to speak, including those people standing in line? Okay, so that looks like it's the line and a few people in the back?
Yeah, twelve thirteen.
Please step forward. Hello. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dika Hussain. I live in Troy. I've been living here for last twenty-five years, and I support this community center. I think it will be a good, it will be beneficial for the city of Troy. The center can, they are going to provide academic help for the children who, who are lacking in math and science. It also can provide the support group for women who are in difficulties with counseling and financial help. So it will be, I urge you to approve this Adam C.C. commu, Adam, community center, so we can have a place for ourselves, and it will be a true diversified city if, with all the religion, you know, in, in, so it will be a true diversified city, Troy city. So please, I urge you to just approve this project, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I, well, just, can you, I'm sorry, apologize for that, doesn't seem to look very easy to do that.
It's okay.
You apologize.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just came to comment, I am Elizabeth Ruel, I grew up here, I went to Costello, and so on and so forth, and Troy is amazing. I, we own, my parents own nine-two-five on the map, nine-two-five Colebrook, and we do support the community center. We think it would add great diversity and also service, which I think is a huge thing that hasn't been mentioned, as a component of Troy, through Girl Scouts, through Troy Youth Soccer League, I've always believed in service and doing stuff, and I think that they'll really bring a feeling of community, not only through worship, but also through the services that they provide to the community. So I wanted to thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dawud Walid, I'm the Executive Director of the Michigan Chapter of Care, Council on American Islamic Relations, and I am with my colleague Amy Decore, who are representing the Adam Community Center. I have two comments, one is a clarification, and another is a reminder for this august body. The first clarification is that although Islamic centers and mosques normally have five daily prayers, the reality is, is that Islamic centers are normally at their peak times on Fridays on average weeks, and that's between the time of like one to two P.M. at most. So that is the peak time in which people come to Islamic centers and pray, which definitely is not during the peak hours of Rochester Road. The second thing I like to remind the body of, that was the clarification, is that, and I just want to flesh it up, my colleague alluded to it, but she didn't mention this explicitly, but in the year nineteen ninety-three, Congress passed what's called the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act in the year nineteen ninety-three, which gives heightened consideration for zoning approvals and variances to religious institutions and houses of worship, and for two reasons. The first reason is, as you mentioned, sir, is that the First Amendment is sacrosanct for American citizens, not just the freedom of speech, but also the freedom of religion and the freedom of assembly. And so this land act was then approved for the second purpose is that we have a history in our country, the United States of America, of minority communities, of minority groups going into certain areas to establish themselves and houses of worship, being blocked, and not just overtly, but through covert means. Some of these means that we've seen even recently, which the government stepped in on, like in Sterling Heights, or like action, we were involved in Pittsfield, are talking about the changing of the complexion of the community, talking about if these people come, then perhaps property values will go down. Aralupa was passed by Congress in the year nineteen ninety-three, bipartisan, Republican, Democrat, President Bill Clinton was then there, Newt Gingrich was in the House, and it was passed bipartisan to protect people like Adam's Islamic Community Center, in which we have a large Muslim community here in Troy, and one of the most diverse cities in the state, yet we don't have a properly functioning Islamic community center in this diverse area. I please ask you to vote in favor of the variance. Thank you.
Evening.
Good evening. Like I, like the person said before me, usually the normal everyday five, five prayers will usually yield about as many cars as are shown on that picture. It's not as many people, they'll go in, they'll pray quickly, and then they'll go out and leave. There's not much noise generated, there's not much, you know, not much traffic made, just quick in and out, and they're gone. The only time that there are many people are on Fridays, and even then, it's just, won't, won't be enough people to fill up parking spaces, because people even then won't come, you know? Yeah, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Faisal. I've been in the city of Troy for the past eight years. So I actually live right next to a church, so my border is to a church on Tromley Drive. It's a small church. I've never had issues, it's actually a very great community when they come in. I mean, there is noise a little bit, but those are kids playing, they're, they only get busy Sundays, just like how ours would get Fridays, as you've heard, but when there's other people around, it's very comfortable, they're very friendly, and that's how our community is, we're very friendly. We try to make sure that we're in bounds, and we're not trying to get anybody else's privacy. The other thing, what I would say is, like, because of the diversity, as there's seventy-two churches, and like for us to pray, we, me and my kids, we have to go out, and that's about a twenty, twenty-five minutes drive, and then what we do is like, okay, we'll just sit at home. If this is something that we can have, then we, all as a community, we can go and enjoy the community center, go mingle with other people and stuff like that. I would say please favor the variance, and that would be very helpful to all the Muslim community and plus other people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, yes, to the Chairman and all the board members, and thank you for allowing me to talk no more than a few minutes, actually, I'll be less than three minutes. I see the positive aspects of having this community center. I am a Troy resident for thirty-three years, GM just kind of kicked me to Indiana for one year, and then I came back because I love this city. I wish my children had the opportunity of this community center, my, my eldest one is thirty years old, and, and to have the positive effect of this community center. And if you look at the community itself, and the children who are brought up, you see a diversity, and see the positive effect that has created into these children. There, you know, there are many children who are going to Harvard, Stanford, University of Michigan, many doctors, pharmacists, they all come from this community, and this community center will really bring even more positive effect to this, the new generation. Thank you for allowing me, and please approve the zoning request that has been asked for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Muhammad Sheikh, I'm a oncologist, I work in VA Medical Center. I recently moved from Grand Blanc one year ago. You know, I, I support this variance, and I also ask board members to, you know, approve this. The one major reason, one of the reason which I'm considering for this support is, this is not only the working, worship place, but also they have many other services. this is not only the working worship place, but also they have many other services, including the medical service they are planning to for underprivileged people over here, which will definitely benefit the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you pull this microphone towards you? That soft spoken gentleman, it was a little hard to hear. Thank you. You don't want to have that same error.
Hi, my name is Shaila Hussain. Actually, I want to tell something because I did not live here like that long, but when I moved like eight years ago, I was looking for the house and I talked with a lot of people and I was looking not only the diverse community, I was looking where there is a lot of Muslim also, so my kids can grow up with it like the good Muslim, like good Muslim citizen also. So that is the choice I choose for the Troy and I did, I was really satisfied when my son go and like graduate from the Athens High School and now my I have a small girl also. So I want her to grow up also. This community has a lot of Muslim, lot of diversity. Only thing missing is we don't have any Muslim like like the place where the community can go, the kids can go and get the religious education that can they can go over there and learn about religious and we need something that one and we can we are we live in Troy. We are giving so much to the Troy. I want the Troy also giving us that opportunity to approve that community center so we we can always go over there and have our kids to grow up like as a good Muslim citizen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Sayed Habib. I'm an engineer and I moved in Troy City for a couple of reasons. It has good school, it has good community, and it's like it has diversity. So when I move over here, like some friends say, where are you going? You like you don't have any prayer, like a prayer place to work over there. You have to come over to different city. So you are sitting, everything is there. I'm saying, yes, you know, it'll be there when we will try, we'll do this. So a couple of things I want to mention that is like when people go for worship in churches, masjid or like, you know, in even in the community center, they're more ethical, even they understand more manner, they they follow the manner. In every religion has some good manner. So in terms of neighbors, where like next to this building, they'll see the good manner people there, like compared to other, if it's a business place, I'm not going to mention what type of business place it will be. Now it's a restaurant, but what people will come if we are not getting some people, but there will be different peoples. If I, when I'm going to buy a house, I'm just looking if I see any commercial place next to me because I just moved last year and I just two years I was looking house. If I see a very nice house next to a commercial place, I'm not gonna buy that, but it's because it's good, but I'm not gonna go there because I don't know what does people coming there. I'm not, I don't feel secure because I have three small boys, six, three and all year old, one year olds. So in this case, like if it's like church, but because next to me, I live in a journal next to be like there is a church and but I feel very comfortable, but there is lots of people coming Sunday, they're doing their activities, everything, so I'm fine with that. So in this case, they will feel more good, but maybe they have some concern now, but I hope they will see those things in future. Even I see some of neighbors that came over here because we we are trying to talk with them to understand what we are going to do. And we we are, we are people like did our religion teaching us to take care neighbors. And one more thing like everybody mentioning, like we are not requesting change the zone, just whatever it has, it is more than enough for us because we don't that much people to fill whole parking lot. So I'm just requesting like honorable board members to approve this series, this community center where I can, where I where me and my kids, we can get a social gathering, we can do, we can, we can discuss, we can learn our social things and kids should be more social. Thank you so much.
Hello.
Hello. Hello, and thank you for having me. Uh my name is Mahdi Rahman and I am a graduated high school student from Athens High School. Um I have been coming to Adam Community Center since I have moved to Troy, which was in seventh grade. This community center has made a clear impact on my life. My sophomore and junior year of high school consisted of me volunteering here. I used to teach little kids our youth and making an impact on their lives as well. Every Wednesday, we'd have talks that guided kids my age to strengthen their faith, to make sure they didn't fall into this into the bad habits most kids in Troy are in, and this was open to the community. As for the traffic concerns, I used to get up and go to Baker Middle School as a student in the mornings and Rochester Road did not have much traffic, even for a school with hundreds of students, adults going to work and adults even dropping off their kids. Having a community center at this location will have little to none problems for traffic. I want to leave you guys off with a quote by Dorothy Day. We have all known the long loneliness and we have found that the answer is community. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. Uh my name is Zain Wani. Uh I'm 19 years old. I live, I lived just down the road for 19 years of my life, just on Rochester and Waddles. Uh but um we just finished our month of Ramadan and at throughout the year, that might be the most time that, you know, the mustit is filled or the the community center, the prayer area where we pray. But even then, even at its most packed, it's even when it gets full, I I noticed that a lot of, maybe a few neighbors may have noise, fears of noise complaints, but even then, when it's at its most packed, people are hungry, they're fasting, they just want to go in, they want to, they want to, you know, pray and then they want to leave, they want to go to work in the morning. There's really never much like noise at all in the parking lot or in general in this surrounding area. Uh also in terms of traffic, Troy isn't like New York. We have a pretty consistent rush hour. It's four to six and good thing it, you know, it doesn't spill over that that often. So in terms of our five daily prayers, they really don't fall into that four to six timeframe very often, even in the winter, it's maybe even earlier than that. Other than that, uh so recently I just moved out to university and I came back and I noticed that now there's like a big like storage unit there, there's even like these small billboards, which, you know, even my mom said it was kind of an eyesore to her. But I think what the Adam Community Center could do with this center would make this, you know, for lack of a better word, abandoned restaurant area a less of an eyesore. Uh you've, you've already heard the emotional appeal that, you know, we need this for our adults and our, you know, youth. I myself was working to, what's it, help teach, what's it, volunteer to help the youth learn math at the center, but even those events, they occur on Sundays and Saturdays and there's really no traffic there. Um yeah, that's what I want to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. Hello, good evening. My name is Boniza Hussain. Um I work at Beaumont Health in Royal Oak. Um I just wanted to mention that for the location of this potential mosque, it would be really beneficial for those who work in the hospital at Beaumont Royal Oak and also for those people of Troy, since it's such a diverse, such a diverse area. Um I just wanted to mention that in terms of each of the five daily prayers, each prayer lasts about 15 minutes maximum. So in terms of traffic, it shouldn't be too much of an issue. Um and in terms of the noise, the last prayer would be after sunset. So after that amount of time, there wouldn't be much noise. Usually people come in and they they leave right after prayer, so it's noise wouldn't be much of an issue. In terms of it being near a residential area, um we would make sure to respect other people's property and everything and make sure that the noise is always kept down. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm gonna keep it short. My name is Kalakitrenji. I moved into Troy about three years ago with my family. My family is like just me and my wife and two and a half year old daughter. I really am kind of disappointed. We don't have that many Muslim community centers here in Troy and I really feel like we desperately need one. Um that's it. Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. It is Simran here. Simran, I'm Abashah and I'm living on East Big B Ward. And like my point is going to be slightly different from others. I hope people will understand. And I just want to start with one hadith that's called my prophet is to, whatever my sort of prophet is to say that we should call it hadith. And like just one point I want to say, see, we said neighbors are the most important and neighbors are the so close to you and it says sometime like, and we have to share our property with the neighbors because neighbors are so close to us and we have to care our neighbors. So in point of that, and I'll, and I would like to sort welcome whether people oppose or or like it, once they come and see that community and the love everybody, I definitely I love, I hope that everybody like it and I hope all the people will love it. And that's my point, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello.
Good evening. My name is Javed Ahmed. I'm living and working in Troy for last 25 years. I'm part of number of communities, different professional and professional social societies. After I moved in, many of my friends and my recommendation move in Troy. And everybody asked one question, why we want to try and we tells one of the best cities in Michigan to live in. And they do agree, that's why they move, but the missing point is they say why we have to take our kids to other cities for religious and the social academy, lot of programs need for the kids. And they cannot answer that question. We say we are working and our community is working more than seven years. So we wish we have a better place, bigger place, nobody disagree, but as you know, in this area, it's not easy to get, which is reachable and fulfill all the requirements. So if you look on the programs, what the community center is offering, because I have been part of Iona, IGD in Aban Hills, Rochester Hills, and so on and so on, four, five different communities, and I know how the role they play other than just praying. Prayer is a very little part of the whole community service. So if you see the benefits, especially the middle income, low income people, you know, for their kids, free, free academic classes, language classes, math and science, free medical screenings and law, all of all those things you see the benefits, you will see the these centers are playing a great. I was part of the church also one time, so churches also doing a great job. So they are part of the community and we should be part of the community, try to fill in the gap what is missing right now with the youth interface and lot of other stuff. So I I don't want to repeat all the people others said, but I will strongly recommend, okay, please help us to approve so people don't feel that they're living in one of the best cities, but missing their basic needs for their kids and by themselves. So I will say thank, thank you very much. So please, I request you to approve this proposal for Adam Community Center. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Niyazuddin. Uh I was born and raised in Troy. I did recently start dorming in Troy, but Troy has always been my home and I hope that will be my home always in the future. And as a home, Troy has provided me with the things that I need, like a safe living environment, good schools and stuff like that. But the one thing it's been lacking is a place for me to practice my faith and congregate with other people like me. And I just hope that this variance passes so that I might be able to have that. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening to everyone. My name is Mustafa Rashid. I'm 20 years old. I've lived in Troy for as long as I can remember. I went, grew up through the Troy School District, attended Baker Middle School, Troy Athens High School, and now I'm at Wayne State University. I would really encourage the approval of the variance, in particular because Troy is, as I've always known it, is to be a diverse, inclusive, equality. These are the values that it broadcasts and it upholds. And what better way would that be to include the so many, many, many Muslims who live in this community, who benefit benefited from the Troy School District, want to give back to their community and have a community center and a place of worship to do that. I think the one thing that I really want to address is how important being a neighbor is in our religion. It's very central to our prophetic hadith, which is the saying of our prophet. And I know that there were some concerns brought up from people who oppose variance and oppose having a community center in their backyard. And I think those are actually, you know, valid concerns and it doesn't mean that we shouldn't have a community center. It means we should have dialogue. It means we should work with one another. It means we should be good neighbors to one another. I think that we can do that. I think the community center would be a great place to be in, to have a neighbor as. And I look forward to you, to your guys' support for approving the variance and eventually having a community center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. This is Akeem Hassan. Um I work at Chrysler. I used to work with Padma Kupa also at the same place as a professional engineer. Having a, working at Chrysler together, we always been, you know, very good citizen and I've been, she knows me well. And all those members right here, most of these members right here are also engineers and professionals and they are also good citizen. And I like to see that I get the approval from Padma for this reason and also the board member. And also the second thing is I live close to Adams Bharatiya Temple, Hindu Temple. She knows the traffic over there and I'm hoping this will be no less or more than that. And I wish I get that approval from Padma as well as this board. Thank you.
Good evening. Um my name is Aisha Ahmed. I've been in Troy for about 13 years. I'm working as a psychiatrist through Henry Ford. Um I just wanted to share my passion quickly about what our vision for this community center is, in my field at least, which is addressing mental health disparities between the immigrant and Muslim American communities and the general population. I did a lot of research in the Troy area about people's views on mental health and their access to care, and it was much less than what the general population has due to stigma, due to barriers that we've showed that we can address through treatments, through local interventions, through a community center like this. And it made a huge difference at IEGD, which is the community we targeted initially, and I know it can make a difference here. Our ambitions go to Substance Users Anonymous programs that we'd like to implement through basic getting counselors and psychologists and psychiatrists in the community in touch with people who can't afford mental health treatment and to open up to address a lot of those barriers. So I think it goes a lot bigger than a lot of just prayer and academics, which is what other people have addressed, but we really do have ambitions towards treating mental health and making mental health treatment more available to the population, especially a population that struggles with getting access to that generally. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sayed Rezvi. I also work as a real estate agent. I think all the points have been explained very clearly. I do not have to repeat it. The only one thing which I can assure the properties which are butting with this property is that once it's become a community center, what they are asking for, the property value around this community center will shoot very high. And you can check this statement by checking the property at the Unity Center of the Blooming Hill or the Tahoe Center of the Farmington Hills or the other community centers, which are the religious locations for the Muslims, that the property value will go very high once this will approve. That's what, that's the only thing I want to share. Thank you.
My name is Mustafa Siddiqui. I go to Baker Middle School. Um I'm gonna be a seventh grader in like a couple months. For the traffic issues, I go on a bus every day for Baker Middle School, going in the morning and the afternoon. I come and usually only takes a couple minutes to get to Troywood Drive. And for the noise issues, um like we won't be like shouting or fighting, so it won't be that loud for like neighbors to hear. And then I also read the Quran, so I think going to this place, because I go to other places to read the Quran, so but on weekends I don't go. So I think if people come to open, like teachers come on weekends, then maybe I could also learn Quran on over there at weekends. Um that's it.
Hello, my name is Bilal Qureshi. I've been a resident of Troy for about nine years now. I'm a real colleague, I don't know if you remember me. Um I don't want to be up here for too long because I know everyone wants to go home, but I just wanted to say that I agree with everything that's been stated in support of this project. Um and just also in addition to all the community benefits that have been mentioned, everywhere for the community service, a place for refuge in case of an emergency, things like that, I also wanted to mention that this community center could bring a lot of economic benefits. I also wanted to mention that this community center could bring a lot of economic benefits to Troy and the surrounding area. Currently, all of the Muslims that you see here, a lot, a majority of them, and then many others that live in Troy, are going to other mosques in other cities such as Rochester Hills, Bloomfield, Warren. And rather than having our residents and our citizens of the city take their business to other cities, I believe if we build this, there will be more people coming from possibly even other cities to here and we'll be able to retain the residents of Troy also. That's all. Thank you.
Hello. This is Asif Saladin. I lived in Troy for around two years and lived around this area for another couple of years in Rochester Hills, Sterling Heights, in all of those cities. So the point I want to make is that before coming here, I used to live in Atlanta and I was there when one of the biggest mosque in the city was built, Mosjid Al Farouq. And just because of the building of the mosque, a couple of businesses flourished because people used to come there and for the Friday prayer. And around there, there are some of the shops grown up where they sold halal meat and other groceries and people used to do shopping there. So that was one of the biggest advantage, one of the, that had by building one of the biggest mosque in the, in that big city. So I assume that building of a community center and mosque like that would also help business around this mosque. And the other point I want to make that people of other religion may, might seem that what is there for me if the community center or mosque is built, how is that helping me? So the, the point is like, as some of the people say, like we are very much eager to work with the neighbors, help them and involve them in many community activities, social activities. That's more important thing. So if, if they're with us, if they're around us and they will see that we, we are bringing good value to them and not that like it's only for like the Muslim community. So that's what I want to add. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mohammed Ryan and I'm in eighth grade. I've been living in Birmingham for about two years now. And it's not that, the place that is about to be hopefully taken by Muslims is really close to my house. And I just wanted to say that I really need a, like a spiritual and an educational way of learning my faith. And I would really like that place because it's really helpful because it's also close to my house and it's like really, really essential for what, what I do in my life and it really helps me in different ways too. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jalal. Good evening to everyone. A lot of things have been said tonight. I want to speak on something specific. If you could all take a look at my shirt. It is the Troy Athens Muslim Student Association shirt. Muslims all the way back from 2004 have been congregating at Athens to pray their Friday prayers. How amazing would it be if we had the resources of a mosque nearby to help foster our programs? Muslims have been a part of Troy for so many generations and have contributed so much to our community. I'd ask you to support the variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the board on this matter during public comment? Have you spoken?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry. Is anyone who has not spoken like to address the board on this matter? Is there anybody else who would like to address the board on this matter? Is there anybody else who would like to address the board on this matter? Closing out our public hearing, we bring it back to the board for further discussion, inquiries of city administration staff as our liaisons and/or possible action, or as I mentioned earlier, no action. It's up to the board and a proper motion would have to be made for an approval or rejection or no action for a rejection. I would like to just ask a simple question because a long time ago, this came up in conversation, much earlier, earlier in the evening. So Mr. Evans, so there was reference to the First Evangelical Church, which is just south of that property on the same side of Rochester Road, which I'm familiar with. And I know I've been the longest serving member of this board and no variance request has come to this board since that particular church has been doing operations at that property. So therefore, they did not acquire their property with a variance. Is, can we, can you just describe to me, do you know, is it in the same zoning district? Is it apples to apples between the, I call it the former DSW site and then, because we don't know what it's called right now, but, and the First Evangelical Church, which is?
Is this, is this the one at 3193 Rochester at Harris? Is that the one?
I believe so.
All right.
Because there is an older church over here.
There's one.
But it's this one, the First Evangelical is the northern building of those two. Not that this really matters to anything, I just think for public perspective, people say, well, they do this. Well, it, the zoning ordinances, the city council, in collaboration with the planning commission has passed, is a patchwork in our different zoning districts. So we have to consider what the zoning district requirements are. But this property has been in operation back to when I used to worship there, under a different church.
Here's what I can tell you, the current zoning on that property, and it's a split zoning, the front part of it is its own CB, community business, which, let me compare to the subject site here. So that's the same zoning. Now, the back part of it is zoned, single family residential. Now, I also have another layer. We call it the old zoning and this would be pre 2011. And the back part appears to be the same dividing line, is single family residential. The front part is just zoned B3, which is a, a business district. The allowed uses in the B3 are very similar to the ones in the, today's CB.
Okay. So just for, you want to address that?
Yeah. On that matter, the church that's on the south side of the road, the one just below that picture you got up, that one, that one shows up in the 1916 plat of the city. So that one's really old, before the city existed. The other one shows up in the maps between 19, the 1960s and 1974, it appeared. So it's been there quite a long time.
Right. So it's patchwork and different rules apply to when a building is purchased, I mean built. I was just knocking on doors in a neighborhood in North Troy and there was a parcel that clearly predated the subdivision and I, and it's an empty building, it's a garage, but obviously that's valuable property. So I was talking to this gentleman who had been in his house for many years and he knew all the backstory and it predated, so therefore a new owner can do certain things that a existing owner cannot. And so that's, you have to consider the apples to apples perspective versus apples to oranges about just being in a particular area of the city. So that's, I just want to make sure for clarification purposes, we understand the Swiss cheese nature or aspect of some of these zoning ordinances and it isn't necessarily anyone's being targeted, it, you have to fit within the zoning. And what does the zoning say? The zoning is what? The law. So, you know, I've gotten speeding tickets on patches of road I felt were open season for doing whatever you wanted to do and my speeding ticket with the police officer said otherwise. And so the fact is, the law is the law is the law. And I want to be clear that as we proceed, that we understand that this body is not city council and we, I heard a lot of misnomers and misstatements here tonight. So to defend my colleagues, we had nothing to do with a monster storage facility on Rochester Road. And people said they didn't like this and that. Sorry, we, those things never came before this board. We only consider zoning variance requests based on the hardship that runs with the land. So if you try to put something on a parcel that is not within the zoning, then you come before us, if you want us to grant you the permission to break the law, that's essentially what is happening. And the request is saying, we have A, B, and C things we want to do, but we want you to break the law to allow us to locate there. And people have the right to request that. We oftentimes grant minor variances if it's a foot or two or three, or going back in our records, seven feet here and there, depending on backing up to industrial, backing up to nature. And so some of those have been approved, but you have to understand that there, there is a different perspective. I also heard a lot of statements about what value a community center, a mosque, a worship, worship services, social services would bring to the community and we can't consider any of that. So I apologize. I think I should have, as I oftentimes do, make the charge to people before they take the microphone, because under our system of government, when you get to the microphone, you can essentially say anything you want. But doesn't mean that this board and this body can consider the aspect of young people's youth programs, which will build the steam in their lives. That's a good thing, but we can't consider one word of that because we're not charged with it. Our restriction is looking at the zoning law and a request to put something there to allow that entity or that owner to break the law. And why would we do that? Well, we're charged with hardship running with the land. A very common thing would be an irregular shaped parcel. It's a pie shaped and because of the boundaries coming in, there's no way to put a simple deck off the back. But this is a complex issue. I would like to address a couple of quick things and then I'll, I'll call my colleagues. And that is, there was questions between banquet centers and restaurants. Well, I would say that that's apples to oranges as well because there are different issues with restaurants versus large banquet centers. But this request is not just a banquet center, it's a very large banquet center, but it's also many other things. I'd also just say regarding a couple comments and thoughts about some things that this board has considered in the past. And we have dealt with houses of worship and we value people of faith, but at the end of the day, we have to look at the zoning charge to us under the city charter. And that is, for instance, many years ago, Mr. Lambert was on the board, I know, and maybe Mr. Eisenbacher, I can't recall. But there was a wonderful house of faith on Big Beaver Road called St. Joseph, Caldean Catholic Church. Were you on the board at the time? And there, they wanted to put a lane of two-way traffic up against the property line and that was going to change the aspect. Now, I used to live in that subdivision and I know many of the people that worship there and they're really decent human beings. But the zoning board rejected it because the neighbors were opposed because traffic would be right on their property line, not abutted by the property. There was no setback. And so that's one issue we dealt with. There was another house of worship on Adams Road. I can't remember what, what type of church it was, but they, they wanted to simply put a buildout on, I think the north part of their building for storage, I think it was, because that was in the area of their childcare area and probably, I think, I believe their Sunday school programs. And they wanted to have storage and multi-use of this space to service the property and service the children. And we were very, and that was a very small project, tiny in comparison to what we're talking about here tonight. And so we required the church to add in vegetation to screen from the nor, the, the neighbors on the north side of the property. And the property owners were essentially not opposed, which we've heard both sides tonight. And because they got the screening, then they, they weren't so much opposed or they were more on board with it. So we were meticulous on about a tiny build, buildout about that particular church, house of worship, that church. And finally, I'd just like to say that there was another request that was a good number of years ago as well. And that was a, a denominational church that had a very unique way of reaching the community. And they were mostly out of the Royal Oak area and they wanted to, a lot of their members were from this area, which I'm hearing a lot here tonight as well. So they wanted certain things. Their requirement was to purchase a home in a subdivision as a, a social engagement and prayer and worship time only one night a week. Well, that was zoned residential, not zoned what they wanted. And from a faith perspective, this is a type of faith movement that I have personal affinity with, but I still voted no because the community didn't 100% agree to it and there were, there was neighborhood opposition to it, even though these people were wonderful human beings as well and with all the best intentions. So that's why I'm looking at the setback. And I know there was an attorney here tonight who talked about how that shouldn't be considered. Well, I would say this is our zoning ordinance for the city of Troy. I live here, I don't live in an ivory tower somewhere near the state capital. And at the end of the day, I have to look at what, when council appointed me, they, and I got the charge to follow the zoning ordinance. And then if we want to break it, it has to be very specific to a hardship with the land, not a want, but a hardship. And there are many, many wants about, you know, programs and touching people and helping people. But the question, the greater question then goes, isn't there a better parcel available somewhere, maybe in this community, maybe somewhere else, that could meet all those without having to break, severely break the law on all sides around the property? So those are my quick thoughts and I'm going to put it out to my colleagues now. And as we discuss this, just for the public, since we still have a full house here tonight, this is back to the members only for discussion and public input has been concluded. So we are now going to discuss this and possibly take action one way or another. We don't know, I don't know which way we're going to go here, but I just want to make sure that we still retain that decorum because everyone who wanted to speak at this point has been allowed and that is the, the right under our state Open Meetings Act and citizen participation or guest participation. But I would hope that everyone would respect that. Is there a member of the board who'd like to speak or ask a question of city staff?
Aye.
Ms. Park, go ahead.
Mr., this is for Mr. Motzni. Under, on page 41, it says, under the old statutes, many jurisdictions apply to standard of 50-foot setback as per section 6.2E. There's no reasonable use of the property without a variance. Who makes that judgment that there's no reasonable use of the property without a variance?
Well, I'm not sure where you're, where you are at on page 41, but the...
It's under item two.
So is this the letter from the petitioner?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's bullet point, whatever, letter three, where they outline a list of substantial hardships to applicant.
Yeah. But it's not one of your standards and I would indicate this is a non, this is a dimensional variance, it's not a use variance. We, we do have a use variance standard in our ordinance where the applicant has to show that they can't make any reasonable use of the property as zoned, but that's not applicable because this is a...
It's a dimensional variance.
This is a dimensional variance, correct. So that standard is not applicable. You would apply the practical difficulty standard that you apply, that this board applies for all non-use variances.
My second question is actually for the applicant. May I?
Absolutely. If, I'd like to recall the applicant to the microphone, for the applicant's representative. Trying to make this ease of use, whoever wants to speak is fine.
I just want to verify the banquet center, there will met, because I know at the house of worship I attend, we do not, we have a banquet kind of facility, a banquet hall, but there is no alcohol served. Is that correct? The same would be true with your house of worship, there is no alcohol served?
There, yes, there will be no...
So it would not be chatter noise from people being on the property?
No, ma'am. There, there's no alcohol involved.
That was my second. So that was it. I just had that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since there...
Yes.
Can you stay there?
Please, Jeremy, I got us.
That way you don't have to run back and forth. I'm trying to wrestle around with some incongruencies in my mind. This is, this is a difficult case, obviously. There's obviously benefits to having a community worship center, but it strikes me that this is a terrible location. What have you done to try to find other places in Troy?
Well, that's a very easy question to answer. This community has looked at and submitted to Mr. Evans on several occasions, proposed, multiple proposed properties, looking for a, the best fit for a house of worship for this specific Muslim community. They have brought to the city, to Mr. Evans, properties that they had looked at for the purpose of purchasing and none of them have been a perfect fit. And in fact, they've been told by people at the city, which is sort of disheartening to this community, well, can't you just go somewhere else besides Troy? Why does it have to be in Troy? Can't you go to Rochester Hills? And the fact is, this community... And the fact is, this community's from Troy, they're looking at properties in Troy, they've looked at undeveloped land, they've looked at other developed properties, they've actually attempted to buy other places of worship, including the one that I spoke of earlier. They offered to purchase that property, and somebody swooped in while they were trying to purchase it, and actually bought it out from underneath them. So they have made several multiple attempts to try to solve this issue short of asking for a variance, and, which is not a breaking of the law, it is actually a fit within, it is a fix inside of the law. They've tried to not request that, because they've actually looked at places that could have fit.
Because to be honest with you, for everything you want to do here, you could do so much better than trying to wedge your way into a property that had the intent of being a restaurant or a warehouse.
I mean, I would, with that aspect, knowing the specific, I'm having a hard time with this microphone, I don't know.
If you can hear you fine.
Okay, because I have a lunchroom voice. With the specific characteristics of this building, I would respectfully disagree, because this building is set up currently, the inside of the structure of this building is set up currently where there is a large open space. So, the way Muslims pray is in an open space, we don't use chairs, we don't use pews, we like require movement and space, and it's carpet. There's a large warehouse area that is absolutely perfect, and just needs, it's blank right now, and it's holding garbage, literally, I was there yesterday, it's literally holding garbage. And it just needs to be a small renovation, and there's already a set kitchen, and there's already like industrial kitchen, because there's a working restaurant in it. The space is already set up specifically for the ability to have a meeting room, to have meeting spaces, it has offices, it has bathrooms, it has the area necessary for praying. So this specific building meets all of the, like, interior needs of this community. It's just simply the fact that it's, the way that it's actually physically located on this specific parcel of property that poses the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the board? Ms. Eisenbacher?
There's been a lot of communication about this, the difference between a community center and a place of worship, mosque. What we're looking at is this being a place of worship in our zoning ordinance. Every place of worship I've ever seen, whether it be a church, a synagogue, a temple, a mosque, is a community center. A community center is like a feature of being a church. So that shouldn't be confused at all. We're talking about a place of worship. Our zoning ordinance has a 50-foot setback for places of worship. This isn't a little tiny variance against that 50-foot setback, this is the entire setback eliminated, on all sides. It's not, one side is a little bit of a setback, it's 100%, and that's really difficult. Usually, I mean, we've had variances that were half an inch, because the surveyor messed up 50 years ago. A 50-foot is big. It's unfortunate that there's not a bunch of undeveloped land left in Troy that's available for easy use by new communities, moving or wanting to take over a place. Unfortunately, that's also outside of our realm of scope. We are only talking about this one property. And I'm, I have a very hard time with a 50-foot variance all the way around, 100% variance. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. McCollough?
I am a strong supporter of the community, and as many of you, I've had students from the community, I've had people speak both sides tonight that I know in the community, because I've had most of your children at some point in time. And to be honest with you, I see the value, and I believe that there's a place in our community for a Muslim community center, and I think it would be greatly welcome. Unfortunately, I agree with Mr. Eisenbacher in the sense that the space just doesn't fit what your needs will be, and I see it turning into parking issues, I see it turning into, when the kids come out of the center, where are they going to go? There's no open space for them to be in. The only other place is in the neighborhood or out by Rochester Road, and I would hate to ever see a child get injured, because we allowed them to come into an area that was not properly equipped, be able to handle children outside of the building. I think that that would have been a great thing, if you would have got that other facility that was bought from underneath you, I think that would have been fantastic. And yeah, it's, I just think it's a, I think with what's happening on Rochester Road, my personal opinion, and with everything else that's going on, I just think this is just a bad location, unfortunately.
Now I just add that this board has considered many, you know, this is, the issue that we're really seeing here is that, boiled down to this, we are a mature community that's practically all built out. This isn't 20 years ago, where Troy had farms still here, right? I remember those days, and, but it's not the case. So we have a very popular venue called the City of Troy. People want to be here, schools, restaurants, shopping, it's all here, the access to the freeways, that's why I moved to Troy, I wanted to be close to all the major freeways, and because of my job many years ago. At the end of the day, we are regularly not speaking to worshippers, followers of a faith, we're talking to business people who are trying to make a buck, and formerly in a tough economy, and now in a, you know, growing economy, and they look at a parcel, and they say, "Well, I could put this hotel on and make a lot of money." Well, I think businesses making money, they're a very good thing for our community. They hire our people, they pay taxes to the coffers, but we can't factor any of that into our decisions either. "Oh my gosh, this business is going to potentially hire, you know, 150 locals, wow, that's pretty impressive, and they're going to pay so many dollars in taxes to the, for the roads and the schools and the city operation." We can't look at that. So we had an issue not too long ago, and I'm not going to speak much to it, but there was another hotel that wanted to come to Troy, but this business owner needed to have many variances on the setbacks to a neighborhood. We rejected it. And it doesn't mean that that wasn't a wonderful business opportunity for many people and for the community, just meant that we had to follow the rules. So I would just say, I think to Mr. McCollough's point, you know, maybe there's a parcel that comes up later that makes sense, but let's be honest, if there was a parcel that was available that could fit your needs, you wouldn't be here tonight, right? That's the truth. Because the variance, they'd all be in place, and you would not have to get our permission to do anything. You'd be in, you'd find the parcel, make an offer, and if the project fit on the parcel, you wouldn't come before this board, we would probably never meet you except on the street or, you know, in a local restaurant. So at the end of the day, you know, I've seen many business projects get a minor variance, depending, because it was running with the land, and it could be argued that that was the case, and I saw many reject it. And life still went on for those businesses, they found another parcel somewhere else to invest their dollars. But, you know, in the last days of larger parcels being available in Troy, I did witness a couple of things. Two churches that I personally attended, one, then the other, both went in building projects in North Troy. They bought large tracts of land, and they built beautiful campuses that made sense, and they fit with the community, and they don't interfere with the neighbors vis-à-vis a setback, which is, setback is there to make neighbors good, right? So they're not on top of each other causing issues. And those two churches, Kensington and Woodside, did beautiful jobs, and they fit on the parcel that they bought. Now we get it, there aren't many parcels like those left, in fact, if any. So that's why I have, as Mr. Eisenbacher said, I have a problem with, you know, this monster setback on everything. It doesn't mean for me that all the good that would come with it can't happen somewhere else, but it's not this board member's job to find a real estate parcel to purchase. I'm not in real estate, I don't know much about it. But, you know, once again, maybe there is an option out there, I'm not sure, but I have a hard time considering approving any of this. And my record shows it, that I do not put a big box, big, you know, project on a parcel that doesn't fit for it, because to be good neighbors, you have to make it fit for everybody. And the shareholders are the property owners that are the closest, and some support this project, and others don't. But at the end of the day, I generally vote opposed to anything where there's neighborhood opposition, when it's clear that it doesn't fit the zoning ordinance. Any other member of the board? Ms. Cooper?
If we didn't grant the variance, is it possible for them, again, going back to page 41, they could potentially construct a new building and parking lot that comply with the dimensions?
Yes.
And they wouldn't need to come to us or to anybody else?
Right, if they meant...
They would need to go to the planning department.
Planning commission, right.
Yeah, they would come before the planning commission. Another question I have is, what, I'm not familiar with all the details of RALUPA, I know that Daoud, Mr. Walid, mentioned that. How does that play into our decision?
RALUPA, it's a federal law, it stands for the Religious Land Use and Institutionized Persons Act. Essentially, it's kind of complicated, but in a nutshell, it basically says, if a land use regulation imposes a substantial burden on a religious exercise, then the government has to have a compelling reason for that regulation. But my advice to this board is, you should not be concerned with that, you should apply the standards you would apply to any variance, the regulations that city council has established. That would be an issue that would be taken up in another forum, but this board should just apply the general standards.
I've got a question, Ms. Cooper. Could you show the one picture with the setbacks of the 50-foot with the red line? Are you suggesting that if they were to purchase this property, to tear that down, build something else to conform in that red space area?
Mm-hmm. They could, if they wanted to.
Right.
Even if we didn't give them, it would just, they would spend, I guess about $1.3 million more.
Yeah, but they would have, but the whole idea is, they would still have to conform to the 50, that would be something that they would have to deal with later on, conforming potentially to the 50-foot setbacks. So it'd have to be inside that red area?
Right.
Okay. Just making sure.
And that's an example, I would argue that you can have, your cake and eat it too, you can have that parcel, if that's the ideal location of that, for that property for this organization, then move forward with going through planning, building what is appropriate to the zoning law for the city of Troy, and then find another parcel to do, you know, other things. I've attended small houses of worship, I've attended medium-sized houses of worship, I currently attend a very large house of worship. And what's right, I mean, it depends on the outward look of the organization that's trying to, you know, minister to their members, but also reach out to the community. And, once again, I don't support monster projects on smaller parcels where it doesn't fit. So this could, to Ms. Cooper's point, be a okay move forward, you have to work it out with her planning commission to get approval, but at the end of the day, there is a pathway forward in that regard. But, once again, the hotel that we not too long ago rejected, could have had a smaller hotel on that parcel too, and not had the issues that caused them to come before us, which we rejected. So, you know, not everybody can have that monster project, because it makes sense for their membership, or makes sense for their pocketbook. And that's the unique problem we're going to have continuing moving forward at the city of Troy. It's mostly built out, there are not, there's not a lot of available land, but people want to be here. What are we going to say if you, the petitioner passes on, you know, building there because of this issue, and then there's another monster retailer or hotel that says, "We want that parcel now, and we want to make a lot of money by doing this type of project, which maximizes our investment." Well, making money is good, but at the end of the day, in a business sense, you know, if it doesn't fit the zoning ordinance, I don't support it. Ms. Cooper?
So, I don't know that I'm talking about a monster, I'm just saying that anybody that wants to do anything with that property would now need to have that dimensional variance granted. Is that what, that's what I'm understanding?
I don't understand your question, when you say "do anything"?
Like if they, if they purchase, anyone that purchased that property, would they need to also follow that dimensional variance?
Use it as a place of worship?
Only because it's using...
Well, no, is your question, anyone using that property as a place of worship, would they have to follow those dimensions? Is that your question?
No, not just a place of worship, what, who...
I'm not sure what your question is.
So it can be used as a commercial entity without having the dimensional variance?
Yes, it currently is being used as a commercial entity without...
But how is it that they didn't need the dimensional variance?
The dimensional variances that we're seeking tonight are specific to places of worship throughout the city.
Okay, got it.
So they're specific to that use, and that use only, in all zoning districts.
And I think that the petitioner would argue that, you know, therein lies the issue, right? You know, you have an Asian steakhouse, whatever you want to call it, what it was, before that it was retail, and they want to operate in the same building in a different way, but they want to operate on that same parcel for their members. And we wouldn't, you know, I'm not familiar with any other house of worship in the city of Troy that would be in that same category, because obviously they follow the zoning ordinance, and they have their 50-foot around minimum, and in most cases, larger than that. I can just remember seeing for many years the growth of St. Anastasia and John R., and they kept building back, because it didn't infringe upon that setback, and they became a very large operation, but they owned the property, and it all fit according to this Any other member would like to be recognized? Mr. Calzunas?
Yeah, I happen to have a business around Liver knowsh and the next facility, you know. And Friday night, you barely can walk through it. They have six police cars there, and cars all over, they're parking across the street, next to the street, from the houses, the back of the houses, and to put the traffic back, it takes six police cars over there to direct traffic. I understand now, a lot of these people that show up here today, I'm sure they have a lot more in the houses, they haven't shown up today. I don't think it's big enough, with this amount of people, to be in the middle of the traffic there on Friday night. And there are a lot of places here in Troy available, and they should, I think, should look a little harder, they do have more places.
Thank you. Any other member of the board? Well, seeing if we don't have any further comments or inquiries of city staff, and it's a few minutes before 11:00, does someone, would someone like to make a motion? Would a member of the board like to make a motion for possible action? And a call for a third request for any possible resolution to be authored.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, Vice Chairman Agalas.
I'll make a motion to deny the variance, largely because it doesn't...
I'll make a motion to deny the variance, largely because it doesn't fit the statement of practical difficulty, does not fit the intent and purpose of that lot, you know, wiping away 100% of the, the side rear setback seems a bit aggressive.
Mr. Agalas, Vice Chairman Agalas made a motion, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Mr. McCauley seconds that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion from a member of the board? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, I believe, were prepared for a vote.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Agalas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Keltsounas?
Yes.
The resolution is agreed to, and the petitioner's request has been rejected. We move on to item number six, which is, which are communications. Mr. Evans, do we have any communications?
We do not.
Okay, we can then move on to item number seven. Miscellaneous business, is there any other business for our board to consider tonight?
No further business.
Is there any business from a member of the board to bring forward? Seeing none, Ms. Cooper?
When, we had a meeting of the Planning Commission where we approved for...
Will be ordered.
14 condos on Square Lake by John's Market, and we received some very threatening, I won't say threatening, but very disappointing language in the emails from nearby residents. It was kind of unsettling, but I will say this, I did ask, as a result of that, I have asked for a report on traffic, because I feel that we are approving a lot of development, because small parcels of land are being developed by people like Mr. Abithera, and...
Excuse me, Ms. Cooper. There will be order in the chamber, please. Okay, please proceed.
And I, I believe that I have, I think that, I, I don't know how all of you feel, but I feel that there is a specific issue with traffic, anecdotal, but every time a development comes before the Planning Commission, we're told that the traffic engineering department and the OHM consultants have done the study, but I am, just based on my own personal experience, and, and I believe a lot of residents, I think that we are seeing a lot of traffic and, and a lot of congestion. And so, when that report comes forward before our Planning Commission, when it gets on the schedule, I would invite you either to watch that night or to come and listen in person. I think it's a really important impact, the amount of traffic that we're seeing as we, as we continue to develop the small green spaces that are privately owned and held available.
Thank you. Any other member of the board? I'd like to move on to public comment. So this time, I'm going to open up public comment to the, this board on any matter. So if you'd like to address this board on any matter, please step to the microphone and identify yourself.
Don Gergen?
I think Jim McCauley taught my grandfather.
Thank you very much, that was very enjoyable. Any, any else who'd like to address the board on any matter, please step to the microphone. Anyone like to address the board on any matter, please step to the microphone. Final call for public comment to the board here tonight, close that portion out, and we will see each other again, potentially, in July.
We will.
We will, for sure, apparently. So we will stand adjourned, adjournment until then.